Welcome to our meeting of 2021, City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. And I welcome all those in attendance and welcome back the City Council. And I'd like to put a special welcome to our new council member, Jason Alders.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome to the team. I would like to start off tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I do have a small flag behind me. I'll get out of the way here. And if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. So the way our agenda reads tonight, we'll start with a roll call, all votes, eventually. When you're online, I'll just have to roll call votes. I'm getting some feedback from somebody, Lori, if we got some mutes that we can do here?
Anybody?
Everybody's muted unless you're speaking. All right. So Lori, if you please do the roll call.
Mayor Jeff Pilon.
Present.
Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg.
You might be muted, Joel.
Councilmember Greenberg is muted. Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Alders.
Here.
Thank you. And then we have an agenda for tonight. Approve the agenda as submitted or amended?
Mr. Chair.
Planner Stockman.
If we could move Mr. Phil Hanson up a little on the agenda, maybe under Hayesman or after Brian's Ben? So he doesn't get stuck behind all those ordinance discussions?
Council? That probably the shorter discussion, you want to put him first on the planning and zoning?
Sounds good. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Great.
All right. Other items on the agenda? Seeing and hearing no changes, I take a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville?
I move the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Approved. Now roll call. Sorry, it's got to be roll call, we're online here.
Okay, roll call vote, Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Mayor Pilon.
Aye.
So I would like to, just as we start off the first meeting of the year, let's take a quick look back. You know, I want to thank the council. It was a very challenging year, learning to do things online. Certainly want to thank the staff for all the extra effort that went into learning to do things differently in 2020. Having to learn how to do meetings online, going back to in person, going back to online, and then obviously dealing with our COVID funds and a lot of ups and downs throughout the year. But I do really want to thank Lori and your staff for keeping everything together in the midst of the chaos as we were trying to learn how to do things, trying to figure out what the federal government was doing, what the state government was doing, what the county was doing, and what we were going to do with with the changes that we faced with, and certainly the monies that we had to handle responsibly. Obviously, a lot of changes this year. One of the biggest ones we're going to be living with for a long time is starting our own fire department, again with COVID and trying to get things through the state legislature, and then working with people directly and then online. A very challenging project, but I again thank former council member Brian for his extensive work on that. And again, city staff, Lori, for work you did on the legislative part and all the work you did in arranging interviews and coordinating things with that. So I appreciate that. We did get some high-speed internet started, and I think that puts a leg up on something we can approach very aggressively this year for getting more internet throughout the city. Certainly, if you've been by, you've seen we have a fire station addition that's nearly complete. I would guess within two weeks or so, the two to three weeks inside will be done and we'll be able to occupy that. So we'll have a walk-through. I think we did a fairly good job communicating with our businesses, monies that the county had available to help them. Some businesses were able to want $20,000. So it looks like there's some more county money for those businesses that didn't qualify the first time. We need to communicate that again. But overall, a very challenging year, but a very successful year. And so I appreciate the patience and the hard work of staff and of council in getting through this. So thank you all very much for a successful 2020 in spite of what we faced. And I look forward to a positive and improved 2021. Thank you all with that. And from there, we will go to the oath of office.
Mayor and council, I'm wanting to know, would you like to do this, since it is a little bit different than would normally be done? Would you like to do this all at one time or individual oath of offices?
I'd like to do it individually and
That I would recommend that too. Okay. So we'll start with Mayor Jeff Pilon. If you could, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jeff Pilon.
I, Jeff Pilon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Council.
The Office of City Council.
In and for the city of Nowland.
In and for the city of Nowland.
In the county of Anoka, the state of Minnesota.
The county of Anoka, the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. Councilmember Rainville.
Yes.
I, Mary Rainville.
I, Mary Rainville.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Council.
Of the Office of City Council.
In and for the city of Nowland.
In and for the city of Nowland.
In the county of Anoka, state of Minnesota.
In the county of Anoka, state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
The best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alders.
Yes.
I, Jason Alders.
I, Jason Alders.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Council.
Of the Office of City Council.
In and for the city of Nowland.
In and for the city of Nowland.
In the county of Anoka, state of Minnesota.
In the county of Anoka, the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you.
You bet.
I will have the certificates available for signature up at the office. If you want to make an appointment to stop in, and then we can get them notarized and signed.
Thank you, Lori. All right, we'll move on with our agenda, and we have consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion. Councilmember Rainville.
I move that we approve this agenda.
Motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
Motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? We'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
Mayor Jeff Pilon.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
All right. And so we have a number of people visiting us online here. We do have an opportunity for floor items here. You need to be recognized by the chair. This will be for items that are not on the agenda tonight, things that you want to bring the council's attention, but are not on the agenda. You must first be recognized by the mayor, and then you have three minutes to present here. Item.
Yes, I'd like to be on the flyer for a mayor.
Okay, I'll recognize Dale Ames.
Okay, do I have to give my address to him?
Yes, please.
22176 Sugar Bush Road, Northwest, Nowland, Minnesota. I'm here representing myself, a former chairman of the planning and zoning, because we don't have a chairman this time. I want to give you a little brief history of the planning and zoning. The first planning and zoning chairman was Harvey Greenberg, and I don't know how long he held this office. But in 1976, when I got on the committee, Melvin Johnson was the chairman. And I really don't know the years, it's probably around 15 years that Melvin was chairman. Then Fred Rowley was chairman for the next, at least 15 years or more. And then I became the chairman. It was 2005 when I became the chairman. And to get back to the, talking about these members or these chairmen, at one time, we had a nine-member board, and they changed that. I don't even remember if they did legally, back then, a lot of things wasn't done legal. But anyway, Barry Wagner was on here for 13 years, he was a very valid member, we just lost, he moved away. Harold Jorgensen's been on there close to 20 years. I've been on there 44 years. And I was utterly shocked when I found out that all these changes that was taking place in the planning and zoning. Number one, I think seven members are very, very, very important. Five is not, I don't think it's going to do the job. And I'll tell you why, there's several reasons why. Number one, when Kristen Moon resigned from the planning and zoning, she was never, nobody would ever replace her. So that's why we were short, we had a terrible WebEx meeting, our last meeting, you know how bad it was? We lost people. And if we'd had her, we'd have been okay. And as you know, one of our members doesn't have internet, and he can't get on, his telephone service is very bad. So he can't even be on when we have a meeting. And so, and I still think if Kristen's replacement had been on, and it was never posted, and that's when we had seven members, before he turned it to five. And that's one of the problems you run into with five members instead of seven. With seven members, also, you have seven people that are looking at the ordinances, the codes, the policies, and trying to interpret the right, interpret the right, and you're getting more input, which I think is very, very important in a planning zone. It scares me when we have five or less. In fact, our next meeting, we're going to probably only have four, because you haven't posted anything yet for Jason getting off. And so we'll have four, but we can have three there, we can still have the meeting. But the way you got the ordinance wrote now, if one of us happens, gets sick or not, show up, the meeting is called off. It's called off anyway, but the way the ordinance is written, I don't like the way it's written. Number one, the thing I have to say is there's 12 pages, the Planning and Zoning Policies and Construction, Construction Meeting Orders and General Procedure. In these 12 pages, it lays out everything we can do. We do not have any authority. We can make recommendations, recommendations to the city. All the way through the policies, you'll find this, you're making recommendations. But I'd like to read a couple of these. I think it's very important that you see what some of these are. Number one, the purpose, the purpose of the planning and zoning policy is to provide a set of policies. Yes.
Dale, we're going way beyond the three minutes. I mean, obviously, you're very passionate about this, but
Okay, I don't think I even took the three minutes up.
Yeah, it's been the three minutes, so.
It has been three minutes. Well, what I'm saying is, just to finish it off, and I'm not going to go on this, I could point out some things to you. I think it's important, because I think you've got council members that really haven't studied the planning and zoning policies. And I'm a little upset, and you can tell that. And I got upset after I'd seen that you had a workshop, I didn't know you had it, and I went through the workshop and went through that. But I don't see where the League of Minnesota cities or the lawyers has recommended for these changes. And my suggestion is you to appeal the thing and vote over on it and do a better job of looking into it, because the planning and zoning wasn't even considered, because it tells us right in the planning and zoning, if you look at section three, at the annual review, what we're supposed to do. So I'm a little upset, after 44 years, given my services in the city of Nowland and Burnstowns, and I was treated this way, and not only me, the other planning and zoning members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I'd like to make a motion that we rescind the ordinance that we made in December, changing the current makeup of those Planning and Zoning Committee, until we have an opportunity to hear the thoughts of the current members. I think we've, and this is not part of the motion, but we've caused a lot of hard feelings. I think we handled it poorly, I think we rushed through on RCA that we should have had more time to think about, to talk about, to talk to people about. Dale's correct in the fact that we have a lot, this is a community, not just a council. And we need to be aware, and we want to work well with our committees. We don't want tension and bad feelings. And I think that's what we're doing here, and to go into this year with bad feelings from the Planning and Zoning Committee because of how this was held.
All right, well, this is not appropriate this time, because we are in the open floor items, so we're not accepting motions from the council at this point. But there will be opportunities later in the agenda to address this, so. Right now, we're for residents to weigh in on the open floor items. All right, seeing no other interest in open floor, we will move on. Commander Heath.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and guests on the meeting. I just have a very brief report tonight. Just wanted to give an update. The, in the month of December, sheriff's deputies responded to 109 calls for service in the city. So a little bit quieter month. We still had 14 to bar none, which was, it seems like a lot on paper, but it was a little bit lower than we've had in previous months. And regarding bar none, since the last council meeting, myself, other members of the sheriff's office, and members of the city, as well as the mayor, have had meetings with different staff from Volunteers of America. We were able to lay out some of the issues that we're seeing at bar none, and have some very good conversations. In the meeting in particular that I was involved with, I walked away there thinking that we still have a lot of work to do. And I'm not quite certain if they understand the, an accurate picture of some of the things that are happening inside that facility. But we were able to have good conversation and open some communications. And we'll see what, how things transpire. My hope is that we continue to see movement soon on some of these issues. And then I just wanted to give you an update, if you didn't see, have a chance to look at your calls for service. For the end of the year, the total calls for service were 1,616 for the city, which is a slight decrease from the previous year. But again, remember, last year, we did have some issues where they had changed their reporting formula on us during the middle of the year. So we're not exactly sure where those numbers lie for 2019, but I can say that 2020, according to everything that I've found and gone back and rechecked with our communications section at the county, the 2020 number should be accurate for what was actually taking place in the city. And does anybody have any questions or thoughts on the calls for service or bar none that you'd like me to answer?
All right, council, anything? Seeing and hearing none, thank you, Commander.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just had one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to give an update to the rest of the council. You and I had spoken earlier in the week, and it was a very good question that you posed to me. Just after some of the things we've seen across the nation in the last week, how our contingency plans are set at the sheriff's office, and how things would play out, and how things look for the city. You know, like I explained to you, we're always planning. We have planning sessions where we think about the things that can go on in our communities, and we try to plan the best we can, using all the resources we have, and whatever resources we would bring in from elsewhere if there was a large-scale event. And like I told you, we always plan for the worst, and we hope for the best. And over this summer, while I wasn't glad to see what was happening with the rioting and civil unrest that were happening in Minneapolis, it really put some of our operations to the test, not only responding to a large-scale event, but also making sure that things were taken care of and taken care of well here at home. And I think things went very well for us during that, as well as they possibly could. But what we did is, after that series of events, we sat down as an organization and all the key members that were involved, and we reviewed the actions that were taken, and what we did, and what happened, and then what takeaways we had, and how we can improve even on what we did then. So like I told you, we did walk away with a bunch of lessons learned, and we put things into play that will help us in the event there's a next time for something like that, and there's more unrest, not only in Anoka County, but close where we may be sending staff to. So I just wanted to give that kind of overview to the entire council for their information.
I appreciate that, and that's important to know. I know in the unrest this summer, there was concern by some of the residents, are we fully covered when the sheriff is helping out in other areas? And I know that with activities in Washington, that we do tend to help out, most we have in the past anyway. And so it's reassuring to know that there's contingency planning back home, and that we will be taken care of through the sheriff's department. So thank you very much. Anything else from the council? All right, thank you very much, Commander. All right, we'll move on to engineering.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first item is the Ebony and Garnett Road Project. This road project probably has the longest history of any road project that I've dealt with in the past 15 or 16 years, working with the city. We had a public improvement hearing on December 9th to discuss the proposed road project with the residents. Received public comment, and now if the city council wishes to advance that project, our next step is to pass the resolution that is in your packet tonight, the resolution ordering the improvement. There's actually two separate actions or items under the Ebony and Garnett Road Project, and I think it's best if we kind of handle them separately. So the first item will be the resolution ordering the improvement for Ebony and Garnett Street, if the council desires to move this project forward.
All right. Council, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to forward the resolution ordering the improvements of Ebony Street and Garnett Street.
Okay. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All right, seeing and hearing no discussion, we will take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blake.
Yes, here, I mean, yes.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pilon.
Aye.
Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is payment to the contractor, North Valley Incorporated, for what we call the pre-project work. So this was replacement of several culverts, also completed some excavation and some ditches and installing drain tile. So based on work completed to date, we recommend payment to North Valley in the amount of $132,983.67.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that we operate statements to North Valley for their 2020 pre-project work in the Ebony and Garnett area for a total of $132,983.67.
Got the motion, do we have a second?
I second that.
Councilmember Blake seconds. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Alders.
Approved.
Councilmember Rainville.
Approve.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Approve.
Councilmember Blake.
Approve.
Mayor Pilon.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the next item in my report is a similar item. It's the Rogers Lake Area Road Improvement Project. Similar to the other project, we held the public improvement hearing on December 9th. And again, we have two actions to consider on this item tonight. The first being considering of the resolution order the improvement for the Rogers Lake Area Improvement Project.
All right. Except the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that we approve Resolution Order, Resolution 2020-70, ordering improvements to the Rogers Lake area.
Who is the second here?
Joel Greenberg.
Oh, Councilmember Greenberg's second, so motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Roll call. Hi.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Hi.
Is that an I? Okay. Councilmember Alders?
Approve.
Councilmember Blake?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the next item is to consider a geotechnical quote for 12 soil borings and 12 pavement cores for the Rogers Lake Area. So now that we have determined that we're going to move forward with this project, we need soil borings and pavement cores so we can accurately prepare the plans and specs. We recommend accepting the quote from Hogo Geotechnical Services. It's a lump sum quote in the amount of $6,530. But I would note that if we encounter any organics, there are particularly two soil borings that we plan to do in wetland crossing. And if we encounter any organics, they will continue to advance the soil borings until a depth of which we had advanced through the organic soil, at which point there'll be a slightly additional charge, so.
All right. Council has proposals, I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize a quote for the geotechnical.
I'll second it.
Got the motion is second. Any discussion? And understanding that's the quote as, as listed here, $6,530, $6,530 with additional cost if additional work needs to be in, as stated in the proposal. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor will do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Alders?
Approve.
Mayor Pilon?
Hi.
Councilmember Blake?
Hi.
Councilmember Rainville?
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the next item is to consider payment to North Valley for the 2020 road project. So this is the road project that included improvements to 189th, 190th and Dolomite and also the Krypton area. Based on work completed to date, I would recommend payment in the amount of $72,769.94.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would move that we approve payment to North Valley, North Valley Inc. for the work done in 2020 at the 189th, 190th, Dolomite, Merle's Lane and Krypton areas for a total
I'll second it.
Okay, we have motion and second. So our second was Councilmember Alders. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Mayor Pilon?
Hi.
Councilmember Rainville?
Hi.
Councilmember Alders?
Approve.
For Greenberg?
Hi.
Councilmember Blake?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, my last item on the agenda tonight is the consideration of a resolution supporting a grant application for a, the local road improvement program for 185th and Jasper Street. So this is something that has not been previously discussed with the council before. However, the solicitation recently came out and there is an opportunity to apply for what's called the routes of reasonable significance program. It is a competitive program, so there's no saying whether or not we will be successful in obtaining the grant. It, it really depends on the other applications that are received and how well our project scores against their project. But in order to be considered for the funding, our first step is to complete the grant, or I'm sorry, to pass this resolution before you tonight. We will then request that Anoka County also pass a similar resolution. Since we are a non-state aid city, Anoka County would have to sponsor our application. This is a very familiar process. We've done this before with Anoka County for the Old Viking Bridge project. So if the council is interested in applying for these grant funds, it would be appropriate to pass the resolution accordingly.
Obviously, we'll need a resolution number on it, but resolution is presented to us. Take a motion to approve.
Motion that we accept the resolution to support the grant application for local improvement 185th and Jasper.
All right. Councilmember Blake makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
All right. Councilmember Alders, second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I just have a question. There are two resolutions in the packet and I'm trying to figure out if there, it doesn't look like there's any difference. So is it just a double sided?
Councilmember Rainville, the, the second resolution is the resolution, at least the wording that we would submit to Anoka County and ask them to consider approving to support our project.
All right. So the first resolution is us choosing to go forward with the process.
Correct.
Thank you. I would like to thank Shane for his work on this. When I saw this opportunity come up, I sent it to Lori, I forgot to include Shane, and sent it to Shane. So thank you for the work that you've done on this, Shane. I think it's an excellent opportunity for us to be able to at least attempt to get some funding assistance with the project that we would have normally done within most likely that timeframe. Thank you.
Shane, what's a typical grant amount?
The maximum grant amount is 1.25 million. So I, I have experience with this program. With the last solicitation, we did a project that carried out I-94 and that project was awarded the full grant amount.
And I understand we'd be looking at 185th from Northern Boulevard over to Jasper and then Jasper North to 22. That's the area we're looking at here.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I have a question for, as, so we're going to have you put together our proposal. Is there any possibility of including Jasper from Viking, Old Viking? That's currently, excuse me, currently gravel and it's the only gravel road in that area. And so I would think it would be a, think about it.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I, I don't think, I actually think that including that segment would probably hurt our score mainly because the, the, one of the criteria is that the segments that are chosen provides a connection from a higher order road to a higher order road. So in other words, we wouldn't have that connection. You know, we have Old Viking Boulevard that's just recently been reconstructed, but that wouldn't meet the state aid standards that are required for this grant solicitation. And so I, I think that would actually hurt our, our scoring.
All right. Thank you for that, Shane.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none, I will accept a, I will do a roll for roll call vote.
Councilmember?
Uh, yes, yes.
Councilmember Alders?
Hi.
Councilmember Rainville?
Hi.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Hi.
Mayor Pilon?
Hi.
Thank you, Shane. You've been very busy. We appreciate the, the work and now we'll get you even busier, so.
Thank you.
So what, what is the timing on that, the LRIP?
The, the grant applications are due early March. I want to say it's the first week of March and I think it takes a few months to go through the scoring process and announce the, announce the grant awards. So we will probably know, it'll probably be midsummer.
All right. Thank you. Move on to planning and zoning and we'll pull up Phil Hanson's project here.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
Thank you for moving this to the topic of planning and zoning. Yeah, Mr. Hanson submitted plans for an accessory building, detached accessory building. His home is a log exterior, so it's really not feasible to match the exterior when he's doing this pole barn construction. So he was, he was picking colors that were, that he liked, you know, not necessarily matching, but that he thought would go with the rustic nature of the structure. And I tend to agree that they would look fine given the rustic nature and uniqueness of the structure, but I wanted to validate, you know, have you validate that because it is a unique situation. Our job is to determine whether or not they're compatible and without an actual definition in our ordinance, it becomes a little, you know, subjective. We try to stay more objective and I think for the given use and the size, it's not a real giant building that this would be acceptable. So looking for your thoughts and comments on that.
Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I, you know, I understand he's kind of between a, you know, in a pickle here. I'm uncomfortable in not adhering to our, our, our rules that say that they, the accessory buildings need to match the primary structure. So I just, I'm not sure about making a change.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
Yeah, the ordinance does not say that they have to mass, match, Mr. Rainville, they have to be compatible with the principal structure. So, you know, we generally look in terms of, you know, is this causing a nuisance? Is it an agreeable combination? Are they harmonious? You know, I guess it's a, it's kind of a hard word if they, you know, it's hard to determine, I guess, if they don't match and that's why I brought it to you. But they aren't required to match unless we change the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
I think it'd be between a rock and a hard place, Mary, to find a match to something that color. It's kind of an orangish color. I think you're better off not to try to match it because it could really fight it if it's not close. It could really, that color could really be an issue if it's not close enough. It's such a unique color. It'd be easy if it were a house that was white or brown or, but it's so much harder with an orange color home.
So my understanding is, is that the closest color is the metallic copper, but that that would be, reading us right, $40,000 more in cost? Is that accurate? Is that much more in siding?
Phil, are you able to comment on that? Mr. Hanson?
No, not at all. No idea.
In, in the second paragraph, it says probably closest is metallic copper, but that's not an exact match either. Western rust is an option to pay $40,000 to make something look rusty is silly. Barn red's the safest choice. So what's the?
That's just a cost.
So that's, that's the one that costs $40,000?
The whole building's going to cost $40,000. But paying any amount of money to make her, a building look rusty seems a little bit wrong to me.
So Phil, what color do you want the building?
I'm just going to go with the straight barn red like all the other pole barns I've ever seen in my life. Barn red, the ceiling is, the roof is blue on my house. There's not an exact match with that because I think it's an aqua blue. I will go with, I will go with the slate blue on my, on my roof.
So the colors that are shown on this, on this planning committee, our company, are the colors that you would like, the slate blue roof and red sides?
Yes. Keeping in mind, I'm going to do another one on the other side as well and plus spend the house in a couple of years.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville, thank you for being recognized.
Thank you. I, I guess I'd like to get clarification then. So is paying $40,000 to you, to the western rust?
Now, just a clarification, the building's $40,000.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to clarify is that the building is $40,000, not siding.
Yes, but he's just saying if you, if you're going to pay $40,000 for a brand new building, making it look like a rusty building doesn't make sense to him. I understand that right, Mr. Hanson?
Yes. That is correct.
Thank you.
He's just saying that's probably the closest in color to the cedars, it's a log siding. Metallic copper's in there, but not exact match.
We're dealing with folks at Lester, they don't have a thousand different colors to choose from, so. To me, it's barn red. It's, it's as close as I'm going to get and keep the same general feel of the property. Again, I'm going to match the roof as, roof as I can match or get very close to matching.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
When I'm looking at the memorandum spent by Liz Stockman, she says, "My feeling is that the barn red walls and the slate blue roof will be fine with rustic looking home." I agree with Planner Stockman.
All right. Any other comments? All right, then we have, well, the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Phil's choices of slate blue roof and barn red on the side for his pole barn.
I second it.
All right, motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blake?
Hi.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Hi.
Nate?
Councilmember Rainville?
Nate.
Councilmember Alders?
Approve. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. Enjoy.
Thank you. All right. Let's see how fast and keep some of these moving along here. We have the Mr. Hazeman easement vacation issue here. A lot of paperwork going back and forth. Question at hand is the, the extra $318 has been charged to Mr. Hazeman. The council put it on hold till we can get more information back and forth from Mr. Hazeman and Planner Stockman. Where do we sit? Where do we sit? Planner Stockman, do you have anything additional to say other than what's in the document?
No, I would just reiterate that, you know, we have a pass-through fee system. And, you know, your policy's been to uh, make the applicants responsible for their own billing. So, you know, judging from the research I did on past easement projects, uh, this one is within the ballpark of the five that we've had in the last 10 years. So my recommendation, yeah, was to remain status quo and not adjust the bill.
Counsel, let's say you.
Oh, what? Okay.
What does the council say?
If we have a precedent and we change it now, that opens the door for a lot of changes in the future, doesn't it? Or my, is my perception wrong?
This is a waste if this is it.
Hey Liz, is this based on kind of a time of materials when you set up this billing?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. Charging by the hour. Small portion that was charged to the city before the application was made. And then when I itemized everything, you can see that I noted that the actual costs were and I took off $170. So I think it's fair.
So Liz, help me understand, your bill looks like it comes up to $708 and his email is stating 980. What's the delta there?
So he submitted 980 at the time of application. And then we had not only my 708, but 110 from the city engineer. And then there are the administrative fees that the city keeps for public hearing, you know, mailing of letters and the administrative work that's done. Copies and such. So, um, that was 280.
212 plus, plus the 700.
Right, right.
Or two, okay, 270.
It was, he, he had, the escrow that he had was 500. So he submitted 980.
Yeah.
The base fee's 200. Public hearing fee is 250 and the recording fee is 30. So there's 480 that comes off the top for the administrative part right away for the city. So we had $500 in escrow he was working with. So with the city engineer's time and then mine, it, it went over slightly, so that's why he was billed 318.
Mr. Haysman, are you on the call here? Mr. Haysman? I don't know who caller user three is. Obviously, his, his question was what he was, was told going in turned out to be more than that. I think that it wasn't clear to him that there's a partial vacating, vacation on the, because it's only going back to the area where a septic would be running across.
Oh, okay.
I think it goes to what we had tried to approach last year, making sure that when we communicate to people what the likely cost would be, we'd rather not go over that where we can. Want to make sure that we're giving them the, the best information. I know there was an extra 110 for Harry Wagner to, to look into that. I think there was some concern that they went ahead and took the money and then we brought in the engineer. I think that was Mr. Haysman's concern that had he known that this might have been a problem, he would have changed what he was submitting. He didn't know the cost was going to keep going up the way it did, so. He just wanted to know that you can lock in a number and stick with it and not be surprised later. As a council, we certainly have been asking for that. Uh, avoid surprises wherever we can, so.
Well, if you, you know, vacation of easements doesn't happen that often, if that's something that you want to subsidize and have a set fee for that, you could. Um, but Mr. Haysman's surveyor is the one that prepared the drawing showing that a portion of the easement was being vacated. So he's the one that brought that, that to us. Um, he certainly would have known about it. Um, at the previous meeting in December, he was questioning the fact that we even had the engineer look at it and and certainly we, we have to be responsible and not, and know what we're recording and, and not record something that's wrong, so. We've got to have the engineer look at it.
So Planner Stockman, on these, these other previous vacation of easements that you noted here, we have TPC billings. Do we know the total cost of those? As opposed to TPC?
No, I have no idea, but the engineer would have been involved on all of them. Uh, most likely. I was just comparing the other TPC billings since mine was the one in question.
Yeah, I think he was actually questioning the whole thing. Is this, is this normal to have the engineer and the surveyor weighing in on it? So I think that was part of the, the question was, if it was just your bill, obviously it's right in there with all the rest of them on an average basis. I think it was the total bill that he was surprised at, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman?
Liz, it's Blake.
Sorry, sorry. Councilmember Blake.
Yeah, I'm wondering, what did he think the cost was going to be?
Yeah, good question.
Well, if you read through the emails, you know, he wasn't happy about it to begin with, and I tried to write this to the best of my ability, but you know, most of the time we don't know until we get in there. And there's several documents that are required to be prepared by, under state law. So, you know, we can't skirt the process, so to speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
So we have the planning company, we have hack inspect, all of which who do work for the city and who have bills that we have to pay, time that they bill for. Uh, we have fee schedules in which our residents pay to help compensate for those costs. My house here 15 years ago, I had to pay the permits and the fees and the all the special little fees. It's just part of, uh, making sure that our budget is sound. Um, we need to, we need to make sure that residents pay, uh, whenever they have work done. Adding on whatever construction they're doing. Um, if it involves our city contractors, uh, so we have to gather monies for that to make sure that they're paid. So I think, uh, if it's the 708 that is due, um, I think it should be paid by the, by Jim Haysman.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
The other thing to note is that, you know, Mr. Haysman's got two 10-acre lots and I did make him aware at the onset that had he not wanted to place the septic system on the lot line, that he wouldn't have had to go through this. But it was, it was his request to put the septic system on the lot line. But, you know, we chatted about that at the very beginning of the project. So it was his choice to proceed.
I think one of the, one of the things that, that, you know, the obvious is asking is to make sure that that the fees we are charging, I understand, Councilmember Greenberg, that we do have a pay-as-you-go pay-for-services here so that we're passing on things. I want to make sure that, uh, it's a reasonable expense that we're passing on too. This is, this is what they from a vacation standpoint, fairly straightforward once the details got worked out. But we did run it through planning and zoning and, and planning and zoning really had nothing to say about it. It was, um, it wasn't a question there. So we ran a public hearing through there, we ran a document packet through there. Um, we had an extra meeting uh, because it had to be presented to planning and zoning and also then had to be presented to council. So he's just saying, even, you know, there are you know, $650 for hearing notices and P&amp;Z memos and drawings and findings and resolutions. I think part of his question is can we be more efficient with some of these costs because it does appear that while we pass everything through, if it's not a justified cost, we just pass it through, we're never questioning, is that really the expense it should have been? So can some things be done in the office rather than out through contract? Can some things be done with a, with a phone call? Can some things like this where a public hearing can be had at a council meeting and not have to have a, a separate uh, meeting with the hundreds of dollars that a second separate meeting would cost? So I think he's, he's just standing up saying, yeah, I don't want to have to pay the extra $318 here if I don't need to. Are these costs justified? That's really where he was going at. Did, did we need that? Now, Planner Stockman had had said, you move that someplace else and none of this is even necessary. That's one issue. The charges that were charged are those reasonable? And I think that's why there was a question on, what would it be if we were in another city and what would it be uh, from our history? How does this compare to like examples in the past? So I think that's really what the core of this is, is are we, are we charging the right amount? And then, uh, obviously we continue to have our pass-through call.
I'll keep an eye, but.
We just want to make sure we're charging the right thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Well, just for the record, you know, there's no, he was not charged for either meeting. Um, and there was one memo prepared for both, you know, bodies. So there was no, really no duplication there. Uh, but there are additional items like resolutions and the clerk's proceedings that have to be done that are not typical of other projects.
So you're saying that the four and a half hours charged for preparing memo graphics, P&amp;Z findings, council resolution, clerk's vacation proceedings, the planning and zoning meeting packet, talking with Harry Wagner, that's all lumped together there. It wasn't any, any additional.
Right. There was no, eating charges go to the city. And, yeah, there wouldn't have been any additional charges when the project was continued to the council. Except the resolution is a council thing and the PZ, P&amp;Z findings are, you know, planning and zoning uh, action. The resolution is the council action.
Laura, can we meet whoever that is?
I think it's somebody on a phone call. I can't mute the phone calls.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. There's a lot of feedback though, so they can mute. That would be great.
I'm trying to figure out what television show we're watching right now. All right, here we go.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Morainville?
Yes. I would, um, once we make the decision on this, I would suggest that as a council, um, that we have a discussion as to whether maybe this is according to, um, Mr. Stockman's recommendation is something that the city would just, um, absorb the cost on. If we've only had four of them since 2013, maybe it's something that we can come up with a reasonable, um, amount um, that maybe the, the city covers partial of the cost of it. That would be for a to-do list later. Just a suggestion.
I think, I think the other thing that's worth discussing is if some things are relatively simple. And, and while maybe in this case, the meeting cost didn't get passed on to the the, the resident. This first came up last year at a meeting where he was going to be the only one at the meeting. Uh, we had, you know, the, the Lestico that's been going on for a year that might have been happening at that meeting, but they pulled out. And, and we had another, uh, Mr. Raisler project that pulled out and so again, it was something that probably was reasonable to bring right to the council for the public hearings because it would have been quick at that point. And while they, he didn't pay for the two meetings, the city certainly did. The city's paying for two meetings where. I think it's also worth evaluating if all the meetings we're having are necessary and all the charges are being passed along appropriately. In this case, we've spent quite a bit of time on it and we need to take an action item. Now, he's, he's asking not to have to pay the extra. I think mostly he's asking to make sure that we're, we're monitoring our costs and what we're projecting is accurate. And that we avoid surprises, but at this point, um, we had put off the extra 318. He was going to get billed until this meeting, so we could discuss it further. Does the council want to, uh, discuss any other aspect of it?
I'm still confused and, Mr. Mayor, so you can help me here. We're going to, we're considering, we haven't decided, we're considering paying part of his bill. I'm just summarizing this because I'm, we've been going around and around. We are considering paying part of his bill because we've only had this happen in so many years, four times, and we feel like he should, he didn't pay for any meetings, did he?
In this case, no.
Okay, so why are we worrying about him attending two meetings? That's what I don't get.
No, it's not him. I said every, every meeting that Liz attends, we pay. So if Liz is attending, I think it's $250 a meeting. So if he's the only one at the meeting and this meeting didn't have to happen, he didn't pay, but the city did.
Okay, so we're talking about two different things here?
Yes.
Okay, that's where I'm getting confused. We're talking about whether we're going to help him out and we're also talking about can we avoid the cost of paying twice for something that you, that some people feel we could accomplish with one meeting? Is that what you're talking about?
That, that's one item. The other item is to make sure whatever we are charging and passing through is an accurate and appropriate expense.
Okay.
And, and, and what Mr. Haysman was challenging is that he thought this got to be excessive because he didn't understand some of the engineers' involvement. And as Planner Stockman said, And as Planner Stockman said, if she communicated to him effectively, you're choosing where to put it, therefore, you're going to have to go through this easement vacation. So, and I don't know that if he's not on the phone here, I can't ask him, but whether he's accurately, if he's actually asking us not to pay this. He just thinks it's too much, and he wanted to make a statement about it, because he thinks, in his words, if we leave the checkbook open, all the projects going on, you can just keep charging whatever, and he's just stuck paying it. And we have said as a council, we want to know what costs are upfront reasonably. I'd rather be giving escrow back than surprising people with an additional bill. And that's certainly the goal of the council has been, be accurate with our projections. And that's why the state came up with their worksheet last year to say, do you understand the costs associated with your project?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, so we don't know if he even wants us to reimburse him. Liz, do you know?
I don't know if that was his specific request.
So. So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
So I think we should make a motion to let Mr. Hazen win pay the full amount due, and then follow up on a separate discussion on pass-through costs/fixed price structure for future projects.
All right, so you're making that a motion?
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? So Laura, you've got that as an action item? If this motion passes?
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor, for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Alders?
Approve.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Mayor Pealan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, now I got this huge packet here. And Planner Stockman, you're going to have to walk us through what are we to do with all this stuff we got? We have two developers, copies of the developers' agreement.
You have two copies of the developers' agreement?
I do in my packet.
If you recall, Planner Stockman, we had the one, and then it got amended.
You're right, Mr. Rupi amended it at the last minute. So what we're approving tonight is the final plat for Brian's Bend and the development agreement. And I know it's real long. I talked to Bob Rupi today, and he said there's nothing out of the ordinary in this agreement. The final plat, as you know, is 13 lots on 65 acres. You previously approved the preliminary plat and the variance for the 100-yard, 100-foot setbacks, as opposed to the typical 120-foot setbacks. Some of the recent changes to the plans over the past, you know, since preliminary plat approval have been mainly related to engineering concerns, working with Shane on the grading, drainage, and stormwater calculations, and then removal of that rain garden that was in the center island of the cul-de-sac. And Attorney Rupi had a big concern with that as far as long-term maintenance. So it ended up being just easier to get rid of that. So the way that that'll be maintained, we'll still have an island there. It'll be like a ditch section. If the residents want to take care of it, that's fine. If they want to put some perennials and some pretty things in there, great. If they don't take care of it, we're going to treat it like a ditch section and mow it once or twice a year. And that's what the development agreement says. If you feel, you know, since we haven't had a plat in so long, if you feel like you want to go through item by item with this development agreement, Attorney Rupi said he was open to scheduling a special meeting for that. But he did state there was really nothing out of the ordinary. They've also removed the sign from the median at the front of the project, and it will instead go on within an easement on Lot 8, Block 1. And then, you know, just generally speaking, everything is in conformance with lot size requirements, street designs. Park dedication is $2,000 per lot, and trail dedication is $500 per lot. And the developer has agreed to limit the accessory building sizes to 3,200 square feet. So based on everything and working with the applicants, our office recommends approval of the project. We have 21 conditions in the findings of fact from TPC, and that incorporates Hawkinson's memo into those findings. And so we are on board with the project and appreciate working with Mr. Scopequist and Mr. Brown. I don't know, do you have any other comments, Shane?
I don't think so. I'm here for questions, but I don't have any comments.
So which developers' agreement are we looking at here?
I think it was version five. I don't know if there's a...
Mr. Mayor, I can just briefly summarize the change. So the latest and greatest version of the developers' agreement includes a revision which allows the developer to obtain a building permit in kind of the current status with the gravel road, but not receive a certificate of occupancy until after the road is paved. The previous version did not allow for that building permit at this time, and that was a developer request. Attorney and Rupi and myself spoke about that earlier this week. Actually, I'm sorry, it was last week, agreed that it was a reasonable request and modification to the developers' agreement. And therefore, Attorney Rupi revised the developers' agreement and sent that version out. That was, I think, after the original deadline for the packet.
Looking at miscellaneous, item Q. If required by the city, developer shall enter into a maintenance agreement with the city to snowplow streets within a plat until such time as the streets located within a plat are accepted by the city. Maintenance agreement shall be in a form acceptable to the city attorney. Do we have that?
I don't know that we need to enter into that unless they request it.
It says if required by the city. Does the city want it? We're just not going to poll anything there at this point. Technically, until the city accepts the street, they're on their own as far as keeping that road open.
Correct. Do you have any thoughts on that, Larry Scopequist?
No, that's what our plan was, is just for us to take care of it until the first layer blacked out.
So with the mound of papers in front of the council, is the council comfortable moving ahead? Do you know this well enough? We will have a completed signed paper copy of the milar, the final plat at the Office of the County Recorder. That's standard procedure?
Yeah, there's a whole list of documents that need to be signed. We're not quite ready to go forward. We haven't gotten final approval from the county surveyor yet. And then, so they would prepare milars after that.
How about the bowers are transformed to withdraw credits? Has that been done yet?
We're still waiting on that, right, Shane?
That is correct. We have been provided with paperwork showing that the credits have been purchased from a wetland bank. So now it's just the state catching up with their paperwork, which sometime legs by a month or two after the actual transaction.
So that requirement is also in your findings of fact?
Council?
I think it looks like a great project.
There's no doubt it's been a great project. The question is, we're signing off on the developers' agreement, holding the city accountable for it. So my question is, are you familiar enough with what was in your packet that you put your name on it? If something goes a muck later, the city's responsible for it. So I just want to make sure that people understand the findings of fact, understand the developers' agreement, which the council... Because we haven't been doing a lot of platted work lately, this is something we're not as familiar with, that we haven't done as much of lately. I will tell you that in the years I've been on the council, lack of a good developers' agreement has cost the city significantly in some situations. In this case, we're dealing with an individual who has integrity, who has good quality work, who lives in town. But in the past, we've had economic issues that end up in our lap, because we didn't have a developers' agreement in place. So I'm comfortable with the fact that, you know, Bob obviously has looked at this. I know Bob has spent a lot of time with Mr. Brown, working out details. I'm just a little uncomfortable when we have two developers' agreements in our packet, and I don't know which one I'm signing necessarily. So let me ask a question. Liz, Mr. Brown, Mr. Scopequist. The timing of this, how critical is it this is done tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Brown?
We'd like to get it completed tonight. The project started, you know, with our conceptual in June. We worked quite a bit on everything, you know. So the pack is thick, but it's not, because it's just everything together with all the approvals. The developers' agreement has been gone over quite extensively. When you reference the developers' agreement, if you read it, which, you know, hopefully all of you had a chance to, there is no change probably. It may have been packet to packet other than what has been ultimately stated. It's heavily favored in the city. It's a big risk for Larry to sign. It's a good project. There's, I've been involved in a number of those agreements, but it's a very strong agreement. So, yeah, it's important that we get this moving tonight. It's been close to six months, well, over six months.
Yeah, there have been a lot of challenges with this one. Late-season start. And there's been a lot of back and forth, and I understand it's been an expensive project. So we appreciate the quality of what we've seen to this point.
One last comment, Mayor?
I'm going to say, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, we, honestly, we appreciate working with the council and the planning commission staff. So it is a good project, and I think you should be very comfortable with, you know, where we're at on this, in my opinion. We're not, some developers may, in the future and the past, we try to be cooperative.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Liz Stockman, are you comfortable with the agreement?
Yes, absolutely. We've, like I said, I believe this is the fifth version. I worked a lot with Shane and Bob on that. So with all three of us, three seats of eyes looking at that, plus the developer. So, yeah, we're very comfortable with it.
Shane, are you comfortable with the agreement?
I am. I think the developer agreements that Mr. Rupi prepares have probably the most protection from the, on the city side of any other city clients that I work with. So I'm very comfortable.
We learned the hard way.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve and final plat and development agreement.
Seconded.
Mr. Greenberg? Oh, pardon me.
What, Planner Stockman?
Are you sure you referenced the findings of fact also, Mr. Greenberg?
So Joel, will you add that to your motion?
Yes.
Include the findings of fact?
Right. So the findings of fact put forward by Liz Stockman. And with that, would like to move forward with the Brian's Bend final plat and development.
And Councilmember Blake, you agree with that amended motion?
Natalie.
And the engineering review as part of your findings of fact? The information in the engineering review has been included in the findings of fact?
Yes, I always reference Shane's report, make that part of the record.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Will that include establishing the security payment and all the city fees and outstanding review costs?
I'm sorry, say that again, Mr. Alders.
So will that include establishing the financial security and payment for all the city fees and outstanding review costs?
Oh, right, yeah. We will have them pay everything before we stamp and sign the milars.
Okay.
And Bob Rupi is currently reviewing the, we're amending the letter of credit right now, working with Mr. Scopequist Bank.
Does that need to be in the motion as well?
No, I think you're fine.
Okay, perfect.
I had a question on that when you're talking about the charges. In the current payables, we have a Hawkinson-Anderson bill of $6,183 for Brian's Bend. And normally, if that's being passed on, we see billable in that. Is that an item that's billable here?
Are you talking to Shane?
I'm talking to somebody in the city, because normally, normally, we get a bill like that. If it's being passed on, Lori will put behind it billable to the applicant.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
And in this case, it doesn't say that. It just says Brian's Bend, $6,200. My question is, is that a billable item?
That would definitely be pass-through, right, Shane?
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, we have, they have previously entered into a grading agreement with the developer in which they were responsible for paying all inspection, city inspection costs. And so that would be a pass-through item.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote on the Brian's Bend final plat, development agreement, and findings of fact.
Councilmember Alders?
Approve.
Councilmember Rainville?
Approve.
Mayor Pealan?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Approve.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and your excellent work, so.
Yeah, thank you. Talk to you soon.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Can I ask that we...
Can I ask that we moving forward that we get our attention um prior to speaking, it's confusing as to who's got the floor at times.
Yeah, it it is our our practice to always be recognized before speaking. Certainly in a Zoom call or the WebEx like this, it makes it more challenging. Sometimes I look up and I'm not sure who's talking. So yes, if you would get my attention and I'll recognize you and then it'll be good for the records and good for organization as we're moving forward on things. Thank you for that, Councilmember Rainville. All right, ordinances.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Stockman?
How would you like to proceed with these tonight? Do you want me to go item by item? Uh, starting with twenty twenty dash oh one?
Well, I think we've got them in front of us. I think we'll just uh we'll vote on them. Obviously, they're they're different uh ordinances, so we'll vote on them one at a time. Councilmember Rainville?
Yes. I would move, excuse me. I would move that we approve with the following-
Breaking up there, Mary. Come again, you were breaking up.
Okay. Could be my gut.
That's why you turned your head.
Um, I move that we approve twenty twenty dash oh one with the following corrections, which would correlate with what was originally agreed upon by the city council. And there's a couple of them. First would be on page five. Item number three. City council originally agreed on a minimum lot of two hundred feet. Number four. City council originally agreed to a setback of a hundred and twenty feet. On item six. Excuse me. One. That the uh the second is the last thing agreed, the gravel behind the rear line of the principal structure.
What was it, Mary? You broke up.
The rear line. The front line of the principal structure. On page eight. Oh wait, excuse me. Also, what's safe is that we need to include a, we had agreed upon forty foot minimum between the driveways. And on page eight. Uh, we had uh council originally on um letter B. Council originally agreed on a twelve hundred and eighteen hundred for the size of the square footage of the home.
So that was your motion? I will second that motion. We have a motion, a second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
So why would we not go forward with what the uh planning and zoning committee recommended?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Well, the council had originally agreed to the items that I mentioned. Um and I I believe we should go back to what the council had originally agreed to. The uh planning and zoning is a recommending body. Um maybe it should have went to them first. Um but it came to council first and the council made decisions, and I think we should stick with the decision. Decisions were provided by our staff. The planner and also our engineer.
Any other discussion?
I guess I don't agree with that. I think uh the planning and zoning looked at this for a couple of different months and went over this and looked at several different layouts to try to optimize what we believe was a fair compromise between um what people are looking for from this RR, from this from this development. And we're trying to uh give some creativity to people that are developing lots versus having just a cookie cutter setup. So I think the recommendations that the planning and zoning went through um should stand. And I don't I don't agree that um the staff was involved and totally on board with this because when we talked to it, when we talked to the the planning and zoning, we had alignment from uh the whole planning and zoning, which included uh um which including members of the staff as well.
I will say, having having been at the planning and zoning, you never did see a a layout for a hundred and seventy-five foot width. I I do think when people move out to Nowland, um you know, three hundred foot lot depth back to back, that's that's big backyards. But as you look at cities around us, I think you're not really wanting to get closer together. And and you know, fifty feet difference between homes is significant. Um, when you have that much depth of a lot. We never did see a planning and zoning, anything that showed a two hundred foot. Um, uh, we had three hundred foot and we had a hundred and fifty foot, but we never really saw that. So it it seemed like the discussion at planning and zoning were um this would work, this should work. Um, if you're taking a look, if you're gonna put an RV or a boat or something in your driveway, reducing setbacks, um, it does start limiting how far you you can park vehicles off the street without having to go onto the road. So certainly the council had a lot of discussion about that too, and I don't think that that part was represented well in that. So I
Well, then we should uh
Excuse me, I I have the floor. Um, so some of the discussion that that was had was seemed to be fairly subjective at the um at the planning and zoning. And so there there were recommendations and as a recommending body, the council is not obligated to do that. Um, but evaluate, I think most of us um observed or watched afterwards uh the planning meetings and it's then up to the council decide they want to go with the discussions we'd had with the the planner and engineer previously or what was recommended to us. And so in this case, um I'm in agreement that um we stick with the things that we had discussed previously.
So was there ever a layout done? So was there ever a layout done that showed the proposed changes?
Uh, we were operating off what uh we have experienced in the city. We have a hundred and twenty foot setback. Uh, we have had some variance to that. Um, you know, where the Brian's Bend, we don't see the houses up yet, but we have seen some uh where there's been a variance subsequent to that. Uh, one of the requests that I had made is that we have examples from other cities so people can go out and actually look and see what these were like. I certainly did um when this was before the council to say, if we're getting closer to the street, if we're getting narrower lots, what does that look like? I don't know if the other council members did that or not when we were having that discussion. And I don't know that anybody on the P and Z said that they had done similar things. It was rare, fairly subjective at the times. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
So you're doing the same setbacks for Brian? Bend as you're doing for this one?
No, the uh the exception for Brian's Bend was because they're trying to squeeze into a a particular wetland in a particular uh configuration where they can get thirteen homes and sixty-five acres. They were
Maybe they need to get less homes if if we've got an ordinance, if we feel this is important.
Well, again, that was that was one of the considerations that um I've tried to explain. When you do something, you set precedent.
Right.
There is a variance there and that's how cities get the creep. You know, ordinance creep is is you say, well, we'll just do it for this guy. The next guy comes in and says, we did it for him over here. The exceptions that you built into Brian's Bend, do you want to do that everywhere in the city? Because that's the next request that you get is, well, if you did it there, why aren't you doing it over here too?
Well, that's gonna be the request he has, I'm sure.
And that's why we're we're developing particular zoning regulations for this district. Um, that don't apply to other areas. But
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, second, uh, Councilmember Blake, are you you finished before I move on here?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Alders?
Well, I think some of the difference too, though, is that this is a two acre average versus a five acre average. So the lot sizes are totally different. So when you look at what the setbacks are on a two acre lot versus a five acre lot, it's a different scenario. And it comes into, do you want people to be forced to be in the front yard or the backyard? And where do you want the septic systems? And where do you want the backup septic systems? So that was the discussion around trying to move this forward to give some more flexibility. It's a minimum, it's not a maximum.
Yeah, I I'm I'm not certain that there's there's many developers that don't take your minimum. Certainly, if an individual were developing their own property, they might decide to setback further. But generally, as a as we were told at the planning and zoning, we'll take the shortest distance from the road because that's the least expensive for the developers. I also think there was was discussion as as access to septic systems. Um, you had to be careful getting them too far back on the property uh to be able to access them properly for maintenance. Other discussion?
Are we
Councilmember Blake?
Going over all of these every change that Mary's made, we're reading to all of them?
That's the motion that's before us, yes. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
He's in uh development and selling homes today, and he agreed uh with your sentiments that if a a developer has the opportunity to go with the shortest and the cheapest route, uh that's typically the route that they'll take. Um, so
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Blake?
I still don't understand why the setback has anything to do with cheap cheap trying to let, trying to get away with with less money.
Well, as the developer that came into the P and Z said, that the less driveway, the less utilities, the less anything less that they have to put in, the shorter the setback, the less cost to the developer. So that's that's where that that comes in because it really is a advantage to developer. Which may or may not enhance the neighborhood. But they're just saying, if I don't have to put in a longer driveway, I save money. I don't have to put in more copper or plumbing or whatever it might be. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Uh, another thing that the this person who's in uh into building homes and selling is in order to keep a uh neighborhood looking asymmetrical and beautiful, once you kind of set one home, uh the rest of them kind of follow suit. So there might be the opportunity for moving your house closer, moving your house farther, left more to the right, um but it makes for a messy neighborhood. And to keep those clean lines and uh symmetry and to make the neighborhood look good, uh developers will use one lot as an example and then the rest of them to be similar. So if if a developer were to choose to um he's more apt to stay with that all the way through the neighborhood um to keep a consistent look.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Um, I I agree with Councilmember Greenberg. Um, one of the things with this area, we do have the smaller lots. And it's going to look um more, uh, it's not gonna look like Nowland does. It's as far as typical Nowland five acre plus lots. These are smaller lots. So I think it's very important that within that that two acre, that we still have um the ability to have some semblance of what Nowland could should look like with the houses farther back and more space in between um the longer driveway uh versus a shorter driveway. Uh, I think it's important that we have, we revert back to what the council originally agreed to um because that that matched, and as Councilmember Greenberg said it at one of those meetings. That's what is in our top plan um as far as uh what we want our city to look like. And what I don't want is cookie cutter. Um, I don't want um I don't want to have decisions made um that are based on somebody else being able to make more money because they have sort of distances to run um the the electrical, the gas, um less asphalt or concrete to put down for driveways. Um, I I want it, I want the area to look good. And and I think these changes that were, again, agreed upon by council um in the beginning um and went back to in our other discussions um that we should approve them. Thank you.
All right, we'll call for a vote. Roll call vote, please.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Mayor Pelon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. Um, and Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Uh, moving on to resolution twenty twenty dash oh three, uh which is the ordinance amending chapters ten and eleven of the city code um regarding lot livability requirements, cul-de-sacs, dead end street, with and driveway turnaround configurations. Um, I would move to approve the following corrections, which again correlate back to what the council originally agreed to. Um, there's only one. And that is on page one. And item one, B one, and that we revert back with three thousand square foot and three foot of separation.
Mary, what page was that?
Uh, it is the first excuse me, first page. Of ordinance twenty twenty dash oh three. Letter B is one.
And that's, you say that's the only change you're proposing there, Molly?
Yes.
All right, so that's a motion. I will second. Discussion.
What was the change? I couldn't hear Mary.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Change as Councilmember, Councilmember Alders is B one. And it's going back to twenty-three thousand square foot of land area and a three foot separation between the final surface elevation.
All right, motion is second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
I might make a comment on page four of this ordinance. It's the page that has the turnarounds for the driveways.
Yes.
The way I have it written under four C, it just says optional turnaround designs, which I don't like. It makes it sound like the turnarounds are optional, which they're not. So I'd like it, I'd like to change that to say a driveway turnaround shall be required for all properties which do not meet the standards established in section four E, which follows this, which requires, you know, the 250 feet of, anything longer than 250 feet requires a turnaround. So a driveway turnaround shall be required for all properties which do not meet the standards established in section four E.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I would amend my motion to what Liz has stated.
And I amend my second accordingly. Lori, were you able to capture what Liz said?
Yes, I got it.
All right, any other discussion?
Bring me up to speed again, Liz, what, what page you on or what are we talking about?
Councilmember Alders. Councilmember Alder, she was on page four.
Yep.
Four C, optional turnaround designs. And, and it, it's worded poorly in that title, so she's scratching optional turnaround design to have a driveway turnaround with the following language to reference item E that follows.
Okay.
So that's 250 foot distance.
Mr. Mayor, that's the only proposed change to this ordinance?
That one and the one that Councilmember Rainville proposed.
Which is?
Item, page one, item B one, reverting to the minimum 23,000 square feet of land area with a three foot separation. Any other discussion?
And what's driving, or Mr. Mayor, what's driving that change request? Again, this is what we, this is what we discussed and agreed to in planning and zoning.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, to Councilmember Alders, when the council originally discussed this, it was as presented by.
You're breaking up, Mary.
Sorry. When the council originally discussed this, we discussed what was presented by our planner and the engineer, and we agreed upon the 2300 and the three foot separation.
Any other questions or comments?
So help me understand why the planning and zoning got this after the city council did then?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Planner Stockman presented this to council. I, I think I said, does it need to go to P and Z? The councils already made the determination of what they would like to see. It still went to planning and zoning. Had discussions, went back to council, went back to P and Z, and now back to council. So we each looked at it two times. Yeah, and council, I think, had been consistent in what they have said, which is what we originally stated, which was the 23,000 and the three foot separation.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
I believe we did, we talked about it at a work session, is that your recollection? Because I thought we had a work session, which would make sense. And then, you know, start the official public hearing process to make the residents aware of our desires at the, you know, planning and zoning is where we always have public hearings and then move it onward from there. I thought we had a work session or two, but I could be wrong.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Whether it was a work session or a council meeting, council came to an agreement during that session.
And, and I guess I, I will say, Councilmember Alders, that, you know, if you go back and look at the discussion on that, it really got to be splitting it. At, at one point, it was, was significantly less than 23,000 square feet. And, and as I recall, let's just split the difference, let's just make it 15,000 and go with that. So it, it wasn't necessarily, this makes logical sense because of our comp plan or, or other like ordinances. If you looked at the comparable sheet that Planner Stockman had brought in, it, it did seem fairly arbitrary at the time with the planning and zoning that let's split the difference rather than this makes sense for this reason. And I think that when we originally had gone through this, I thought the engineer made a fairly good argument as to why he was recommending 23,000 and, and three foot separation. Now, again, the engineer works for the council and if, if it's, people want to propose something else, he's not going to fight it. He's, it's not his job to fight it. He's saying, I'm giving you my best recommendation. You can do what you want, make a recommendation as you please. But I think when we had that original discussion, I was convinced that, that he was recommending that. That's his preferred, but it's up to the council and certain recommendation of P and Z to say otherwise. But that would be preferred at that point, so that's why I would tend towards going back to the original. The, the argument against it seemed fairly subjective.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Shane. At section on a minimum of 15,000 square feet of land area with a two foot separation between the final surface elevation of the lot and the highest known water table. Three feet versus two feet. One of the things that was discussed in planning and zoning was if it's three feet, will people be forced hauling dirt and make a pile, build their house? If so, it makes sense to me if there's water nearby that, yeah, they get their house high enough so they're not in trouble if there's flooding or this or that. What's your opinion on the three feet versus two feet?
Oh, that's a, Mr. Greenberg, that's a, it's a real tough section of code to write. And the, the toughest part is we're, we're always evaluating against a historical presence of groundwater. So we're looking at the soil, we're looking for this modeled soil. That likely was, that modeling likely occurred for the first several thousand years before we ditched all of Anoka County in the 30s, 40s and 50s. And once we ditched all of Anoka County, some of that has changed. So in some cases, it, if there's, if there's been a lot of ditching in the area, that separation doesn't mean as much because the actual water table could be five feet lower. As far as the, between the, the difference of two feet and three feet of separation, really what that is going to impact is how much fill has to be hauled in. So that, that separation for that 23,000 square feet or 15,000 square feet can be achieved by hauling in fill. So if we're going to require that there's three feet of separation for 23,000 feet, that would just be more truckloads of fill to achieve that.
How, Shane, how often do you run into a situation where a house needs typical of an area, how often do you have to haul in a bunch of fill to meet that requirement?
It can be fairly often. You know, I think one thing to, to keep in mind is the, the topography was created by a lot of glacier action and therefore we kind of have these layers of soil. And a lot of times we have a hardpan layer that acts as a confining, a confining layer just underneath the surface and it kind of follows a, follows the topography of the surface. So for example, in Brian's Bend, where we have a lot of topography, and they, they say maybe do 10 soil borings within a couple hundred feet, that, that elevation of the modeled soil could vary 10 or 15 feet across 500 feet. And sometimes you might have two feet of modeled soil on a slight slope of a hill that has 20 feet of elevation going down to a wetland. It's really variable and it's, and the standards are really variable, not only within Anoka County, but across the state. It's just one of those things that the whole reason for the, I mean, if I were to assume the reason that this was originally written in everybody's code was to protect basements from flooding. And that's, it's not a perfect science, which is why we allow for, and we also allow for, if, if a developer doesn't think that the historical modeling is an accurate level of what groundwater is now, they can do the monitoring wells as an additional test. So that's, that's how, what we try to do to make it, if something's not making sense, at least there's an avenue, a plan B, that it seems more logical.
And that's your item B five, right? Is that, is that?
That is correct.
You, you've built in the, the variance into the, the ordinance.
That is correct. B five would allow a lesser separation specifically to, so this is for a particular, you know, when they're actually constructing the house now, the separation to the basement floor elevation.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Engineer.
Nelson.
I do just have one clarification question for Planner Stockman. So going back to the, the turnaround options on page four, would these be applicable for lots or for driveways serving like three properties or more? Is that what this is applicable to?
No, they, the previous ordinance we approved required a turnaround for any driveway longer than 250 feet. So where the fire trucks can't reach around to the back of a home, you know, from the street or from the terminus of a driveway. So this was for general safety and fire access with 12 foot wide for one or two family home and then 20 feet wide for multiple, you know, more than three, or three or more, I guess. Did that answer your question or not?
Yeah, I think that, I think it does. So, so basically at a local level, we're going over and above what's required on a state level.
Yes. Yeah, because we have so many long driveways and, you know, seclusion on, on many lots out here.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
So with this separation, I mean, the reason that the planning and zoning debated this is because we wanted to avoid houses look like they're being built on gopher holes, gopher mounds. And I'm concerned if we leave this at three feet with 23,000, we're going to have homes stuck in the middle of a lot that are built on a little gnome. And we've talked about, it's a bit of an arbitrary number with this separation, especially with the tiling that's went on in the community in the last 30 and 40 years. I'm looking at, do we want each one of these homes to be stuck on a little hill? Or do we give them some more flexibility?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I believe to Councilmember Alder's point, that flexibility is built into letter four under B. If they can prove something different, then.
Actually, five.
They're allowed to, I'm sorry, five, yes, yes, five, thank you. Give them that flexibility there.
But that's at an extra cost. That, that may be for nothing. So we just talked earlier about, are we making it easy to do business with us? Do we have set, set costs? And we're building in some extra cost for every one of these. And we believe the two foot versus three foot is very arbitrary to begin with. And if it's unchecked, we know that each one of these lots for 23,000 square feet, they potentially are going to have to haul in a foot of fill.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
There, there may be some in this RRT, but this ordinance itself is for the entire city. So it's not just for the RRT, it's for the entire city, which the remainder of the city has much bigger lots and much more options. But I believe that the inability to, to waiver from B one is listed as B five.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Brian Ben doing this too? This is an ordinance for the whole city, so they're, they're doing this two foot separation too?
They're doing it.
Or three feet, three feet.
Correct. Correct.
Right, okay. Good.
All right. Anything else? Seeing and hearing nothing, I will take a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Councilmember Alders.
Nay.
Councilmember Rainville. Mayor Pealan.
Aye.
All right, so we move on to the draft ordinance. Amending chapter five of the Island City Code relating on-street parking requirements and snow removal. Planner Stockman, in your, your cover letter, you mentioned more discussion is needed prior to further amendments to the ordinance or property owner notification letter. So should we be finishing that here before we be dealing with this rather than taking this up twice?
Well, I think maybe there need a little guidance before we finalize this thing. If, I would say page one is fairly well, I guess, analyzed from, from prior meetings. When we get into page two about where in five dash one dash three, where we're amending the snow removal requirements, that's where I think we could use a little bit of work. And we talked about creating a graphic, kind of showing where snow removal is appropriate. And after kind of attempting that and talking to Joe and to Shane, difficult, I'm feeling like we have to kind of go back to basics in that, you know, it's the snow across the road that really caused the problem. Generally speaking, Joe thought that, you know, when he's operating the plow and with the wind. when he's operating the plow and with the wind on it and everything, his recommendation was to be about six feet off the paved surface. But of course, you've got mailboxes and other obstacles in the way. So I don't think it's realistic to say that snow cannot be, you know, in a ditch or on the shoulder necessarily. But so it's going to be hard to establish a number. I was trying to think of a way that it would be easy for residents to keep track or know, you know, how far snowback has to be back from the road. But for instance, at the corner of your driveway where your driveway meets the public road, it's literally impossible. You know, you can't clear snow back another 14 feet from the edge of the road. It it's just, it's difficult. So I kind of bailed on the drawing for now and just wanted your thoughts on it. But at this point, I'm thinking we kind of go back to basics where we just say, and which is why I included our existing language and the language from under state law, which just states that we can't, that snow should not obstruct any highway or deposit snow or ice thereon. So right of ways shall not be obstructed in any way. So with that, I guess I could recommend a couple of changes and then see where you want to go from there. Otherwise, I think the parking portion is fine. I think it's just maybe playing around with that section five dash one dash three a little bit.
Yeah, because that, you know, that is, if you take a look at, you know, somebody has the plow come by their driveway, that's where the big mound is. They're going to push it left or right. And and that's, most of them aren't cognizant of that being right of way. It says right of way or ditch. You know, I mean, even even at the end, I'm on a county road, I'm going to push it down into the ditch as far back as I can.
Right.
But, you know, once you do that and once the snowmobile's hit it, it's pretty much locked for the winter. So we 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 have to be able to give clear instructions to residents because if we if we just say right of way or ditch, that's not going to be enforceable anywhere. You can't make unenforceable laws because you guys say who's going to be able to move short of a a loader or a bucket on your tractor to get that stuff back? Mine have to be completely out of the right of way or ditch with what's left at the end of the driveway. So we do have to come up with something clear there. And then obviously, you know, whether whether we have to bold or italicize or it's snow and ice shall not be pushed across or into a public street. You know, everybody knows you can't leave it in the middle of the road. But I think that the questions we've had is people that have been pushing it across the road, leaving mounds in the road and not clearing the right of way on the other side of the road. That's where we've been hitting it with trucks. You know, that range is something that's frozen up in the middle of the night, you know. I talked to staff about that. You know, it's not only rough on equipment, it's rough on the people, so. So yeah, I think we need to clean that up. Make sure it's a I'm going to make it as easy to understand as possible. I'm going to make it easy to do right and hard to do wrong in this situation. So whatever we need to do to clear that up and what you're going to do at the end of driveways is going to be a challenge.
Yeah. So if you want me to clear that up and then bring back the letter to go with it next month, is that satisfactory or do you want to talk more about it now?
No, I I think clear it up. I mean, whatever Joe and Lori certainly can help with with whatever that is. Obviously, Joe's and his staff are out there plowing. That's why I got my information from them. So but yes, if if there's something that that we could have Lori and Joe help with that, obviously, there's going to be the ones enforcing it. And so it's got to be make sure it's understandable to them as well, so. But I I think rather than it's already after our agreed upon quitting time, we got a couple of things to wrap up here tonight. So let's bring that back for February.
Okay, that's fine.
The council agrees. See a bunch of shaking heads, so we'll agree with that. We'll bring it back in February. All right. May Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
We have in front of us two applications for the Planning Commission. And I would move to table the appointment and until the council has had the opportunity to discuss a process for appointing somebody to the commission, which it would include qualifications they'd like to see a member have and training requirements that the member would have to agree to. Once that has been agreed upon by the council, council can then give direction to staff for commission openings to allow for all residents to have the opportunity to apply for an opening.
All right, so that's your motion?
That is, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I will second that discussion. Motion is second. Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
A while back, the excuse me, the council had conversations about training for for Planning Commission members, qualifications. I have to reach back to the League of Minnesota Cities. They offer a training for Planning Commissions. They offer an abundance of written documentation in regards to being a Planning and Zoning Committee Commission Member, the the do's and don'ts, the rights and wrongs. And at the time, our attorney, Mr. Rupee, and our planner, Ms. Stockman, said that they would help put together a training session for members. And I think it's important that somebody who is going to apply for this position knows what what they're what they're going to be tasked with and what the council's expectation expectations are for that member. And once we get those set set, then we can open up the positions to everyone in the city, which has not occurred at this time.
But yeah, I I I think you're you're right that the training is important. We certainly discussed it numerous times in the past. One of my responsibilities with the League of Minnesota Cities on the Amicus Board, I guess, somebody backfeeding again. Who is that is Lori? That is one of the things that gets cities in trouble. That's where lawsuits come from is is land use regulations, land use decisions. So training is is extremely critical. I I think many times, Councilmember Blake saying that people should know what they're getting into, running for council, running for or putting their name in for a position to know what it is they're getting into before they actually get into it. I I agree that we should clearly identify what training we expect and what the council's expectation, what an advisory commission is. And I I think it's reasonable to have those clearly identified so the people that are applying know what they're getting into ahead of time rather than after the fact. Certainly, that makes it much clearer and improves communication. So we know everybody's got the same training, everybody's making decisions based on the same thing, an understanding of our comp plan, our ordinances, our zoning regulations, and their authority within the the commission and their limitations within the commission. And certainly, as we've seen lately, an understanding of the open meeting laws, because again, that will get get us sued in violation of open meeting laws. So communication off record, community, serial communication, those types of things are are important to know. And if people are saying that's more rigorous, we've had that with committee people in the past. They didn't know the rigors that went with it and they didn't want to keep serving after that. So I agree that that it's it's reasonable to provide expectations and training requirements and make sure people know that. And then make sure we publicize the opportunity so that we can make good decisions going forward. It certainly is the planning and zoning is key to doing good research so we can make reasonable recommendations to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Is that Councilmember Alders?
What's the timeline here? Because we have an opening. We have several openings on the P and Z right now, and I don't know if it's a functional board.
Actually, it is. It is a functional board. The the quorum is is a majority of the people that are currently serving. So they have quorums. I think the timeline, as soon as we can get the the documents together, that Councilmember Rainville was just identifying, I think, the sooner the better. And obviously, we'd like to have something before February, I guess. Councilmember Rainville, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I my goal would would be to have the information ready and to be presented at the February workshop for discussion and hopefully I would hope try to get earlier so council would have it prior to the workshop. If you have any questions or concerns, they can feed those back to the strike who can feed them to me. I would ask that I be able to talk with this the strike, excuse me, the Stockman, and also attorney Rupee, just to kind of go back where we were a couple of years ago when we had this discussion. But I would hope by February meeting, we could come to agreement.
Mayor and council, just a little bit of background to these applications just came into the office. There was no solicitations going on at all for the positions. I think people are aware of the conversations with the Planning and Zoning Commissions, knowing that there was openings and it's actually quite exciting to see people wanting to get involved. I know that getting people in the positions is never easy. So to see two people already step up was quite exciting. That's why I forwarded them onto council.
Yeah, I think that I think we would, you know, publicize it if we if it's clear what the expectations are. I think we would probably have quite a a response. Councilmember Greenberg, was that you?
Yeah, so I remember a couple of years ago first got on and then we went to the newly elected leaders conference and which was a highly recommended by, you know, the mayor and council at that time. It was a great educational experience for us to find out what it is to be a councilperson, how meetings run, the expectations of a how you can talk to other councilpeople, people in the community, pitfalls you want to avoid, the city ordinances, the comp plan. I have a couple of books downstairs that are ginormous that were put into my care as I waded through a a torrent of information, which Jason Elders will hopefully soon be placed upon his care as well. It gets us all up and to speed what we need to know as councilpeople. And I think having access to, you know, the information that's pertinent to making decisions on the planning and zoning would be would be good as well. I think maybe a little bit of different phraseology like opportunity to learn would be would be a great way to pitch it. Just so we don't overwhelm Mr. Elders with a lot of expectation. That being said, a little bit of education upfront, I think, is good.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
What are you voting on? Moving this to February? Is that what it is?
Motion was yes. Sorry.
All right. Who was the second on that?
I was.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville, was that you?
Yes, I motion to give the appointments until the councils have this opportunity. So my goal would be that we would be able to agree on the parameters of planning and zoning commission member in February. If we agree upon that, then we can move forward with applying. So it's not or or posting applications, not saying that we're going to pick members in February.
At the February meeting, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
In the past, have we picked the members? We always pick the members, the council?
Yes.
Okay.
There's 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 recommendations made in the council, that's for the league and state statute.
Okay, thank you.
With that being said, Councilmember Greenberg, are you still at aye?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Rachel?
Aye.
Mayor Pealan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution, let's see, the resolution 202101, council annual appointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that?
Planner Stockman. Oh, I just want just wanted to let you know that you forgot IUP and CUP.
Yep, I just realized I don't went to my packet here and realized that. So so I'll jump back to the IUP, CUP. So we've we've got a a bit of a list. What's our next step here? What what have we got? You know, you're going to send out some letters. You know, a couple of things, as I went through them. One looks like a typo. It's not really a name change. You have to be a neighbor of mine that you've got to hear, maybe it's different people, but it's the same people. They've been there for 50 years, but somehow you've got a different name in there.
Okay.
So who's going to be doing what next? I would think if letters are going out, I know Lori, when we originally talked about putting this list together, there was a suggestion maybe that Lisa could do something that you you had said you and Ellen really wanted to be in the teeth of this. So you knew knew it inside and out. Are you working on this now? Is Liz working on this? Or who's running this from this point now that this is together?
Mayor and council, at this point, Planner Stockman has taken the lead with her history of the IUPs and CUPs. And I would like to work with Planner Stockman. We can be sending out letters from the office and maintaining the list and keeping them current and checking on them on a a certain basis, whether it be yearly or or every other year, to make sure they're still operable.
And so so obviously, we we tend to, as Liz calls them, do nicey-nicey letters. I I just want to make sure that somebody getting a letter that we're just inquiring whether it's still active or not. I would want to not make anybody feel that they're being threatened by it, that we're going to come and pull an IUP or CUP unless they're not abiding by the conditions. But right now, we're just trying to collect information is my understanding. Do you still exist? Is anybody still doing this? And and if you're operating a CUP, but not according to conditions that was established under, then we have to follow up. But right now, we're just gathering information. Is that accurate?
That's correct, yes. And Planner Stockman and I are both on on the same page on that. Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman?
Yeah, I would suggest we bring some draft letters back to you next month and, you know, maybe a little more specific plan because we're going to have to pull all the CUPs that were issued and attach those to the letters. I would guess that at least half of the people don't even know they have a CUP on their property, the ones that have changed owners. So yes, it will definitely be an education process.
Yep. All right. So Councilmember Rainville?
I apologize. You you finished. I thought you were done.
No, I just I was going to say, what's what's our next step here? But go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I would just, and I can't find that sheet in front of me. Um, but I also looked through it and, and I saw some things that weren't quite right. So before any letters go out, I'd like to make sure that that the property owner listed is correct with that address. Um, and I, I will, I found a couple, so I will send those to Lori. Um, because what we don't want to do is send out something to somebody that we shouldn't have. And maybe even those that, um, there are new property owners. You can look on the county website and it can tell you when that property changed. So it may be be able to include that, say, you, you purchased. You're the registered homeowner as of twenty oh four. Um. There is this conditional use permit. If you're not using it since you've lived there, you know, we need to talk. Thank you.
So yeah, in, in the uh spreadsheet that you put together here. What is the, the sort? Because now, now that you've got them sorted by um, the code below, is there any way of, of grouping all the greens, all the yellows, all the? Or what is the logic behind the sort that you have right now?
Uh, yeah, just the, the different types of letters that they may get. Um, or the different actions that we may take depending, you know, but mostly it's, yeah, just we're in the inquiring stage. Um, I find that the online information, um, maybe about the sales has not been accurate, but um, I did get the property owner names from there and that seems to be accurate, although they are a little behind at the county now. But I would like to talk to you and Jeff and other people that live in the community that know, you know, neighbors and, yeah, get some more updated info. Because I agree, we don't want to send out wrong letters. And alarm anyone.
And then maybe we, you know, consort by uh, right now you've got these are all new owners that, that would be likely getting a letter. Group them all together and, you know, so we can do it and say, okay, this is the action would apply to all of these people in this category. And we can look through and say, yeah, that's, you know, we, we've been around here long enough to know that you might want to look at this one. This is, appears to be inaccurate.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you guys could take the time and check it out.
Yeah, so let us, let us know. We'll, we'll look through this, but if you want to uh maybe resort and send us another copy, we'll help you.
Okay.
Put that together and we'll get something together for our next meeting. So. Is that all right with the council? All right, I don't hear any no's, so.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
So what's the main why behind this? The main reason? Because I, I agree with the statement that we send out three pages of uh letters that say, hey, we want to understand where you're at with your IUP or CUP. It's gonna it's gonna, I would say, whip a lot of people up. So from a communication plan standpoint, is there something else we need to be doing to put it on the now then website that, hey, we're looking for information? We want to understand who's still current, who's not. Um, but like you said, there's, there's residents that have had these IUPs for thirty years plus, twenty years plus. And now all of a sudden, we're saying we're gonna do compliance checks on them. That's a huge, that's a huge change.
So, well, first of all, when we went to IUPs, uh, they're supposed to be a regular uh, compliance check. What, what were the conditions that, that were issued? And are you meeting those conditions? One of the things that kicked us off was um, as property is being sold, CUPs go with the property. And, and um, people that are, they're selling, say there's a CUP here. They don't understand that that CUP has conditions that have to be met. Uh, we also, our attorney in the past year, that if, if those CUPs go inactive, they can be pulled from the rolls. And so originally, this was set to clean up the rolls. Somebody who was inactive, somebody moved, somebody who was inheriting a CUP but not following the conditions of that permit. Um, so that was part of it, was to clean up our rolls to say, as you can see all these CUPs that have new owners. Uh, part of that is just to clear up our records and, and take an official process saying, this is being eliminated because it's not truly active anymore. So we're cleaning up our rolls. The other one was to see if the people even exist anymore. You have an IUP for a business. And so it's our initial investigation is, do they even exist? That business even exist anymore? And the condition is the IUP, if it isn't active for a period of time, then the IUP expires. So we're really trying to clean up our records. Now Lori's been doing a great job taking paper copies that were buried in drawers and, and cabinets and back rooms, and she's been doing a wonderful job getting it organized, so it's all scanned into a computer. So when there is a question, we have instant information. It came up as part of the process um, with some of our um cares money this fall, when we were looking at cares money and ERA money. Uh, HRA money. How many businesses exist in these zones? And so then we started asking questions. We went to Lori and it's like we're too early. We don't know that yet because we haven't done this. So we don't have current records to even know who's legally running a business. So we're not out there to shake everybody up yet. Or shake up any, shake up anybody who doesn't need to be shaken up. We're just saying, let's get our records cleaned first and then go out there and communicate that we'll be verifying compliance to permitted conditions as is appropriate. Right now, we're waiting for somebody to complain. If your neighbor has an IUP and they're violating the IUP and you know it, you call and complain. But right now, until we had this, we don't truly even know who all has IUPs or CUPs in the city. So initial was get our records cleaned, get it into the computer, and then clean up any ones that don't really exist anymore. So we're not out on a witch hunt at there at this point. We're just saying, let's clean up and know what we know and then decide what to do. And that's why we're not looking to send out letters yet. We're just gonna say in some cases, when the letter comes back, people may not know there's a permit on their property, and we're just gonna say if you're not running this business, then it's closed out and we'll clean it up. And no, we're not gonna mass send the letters to everybody on that list. Any other questions, councilmembers? Uh, councilmember Greenberg?
Mr. Mayor. Um, so one of the things that we kind of, um, I don't want to say the word struggle with, um, there's things going on in the city regarding our ordinances. Uh, some are highly visible, some are slightly visible, some are invisible. Uh, our policy tends to be, uh, let sleeping dogs lie. Um, if someone a neighbor sees a gross violation, they can uh, file a complaint with the city. We can investigate it and the city can do something about it. Uh, if the city were to take up all the violations in the city of our ordinances and stuff, we would be con busy and hounding people. So to some degree, we're turning a blind eye to violations and, and uh, Liz is more acutely aware of those being that she's very versed on the ordinances. And um, we've had the discussion. What do we do as a city? Do we put some teeth into persecution, prosecution, whatever? Do we? Uh, what do we do? And we've been slowly and slightly and carefully um, trying to proceed forward as we try and tackle what I see as a, a very large part of now then. Um, where people are blatantly in violation, subtly in violation, gently in violation. It's all over, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Just to add to that, I think it's uh, two different things also when you're talking about just general properties. You know, some guy that's got five cars out back and he's only supposed to have two. That's general enforcement violations. But when you're issuing permits to specific properties that are supposed to abide by conditions and they're not. And that's a totally different story in my mind. So we'll have to kind of chat about that a little there also.
I would, I would say there was, there was an example that came up recently, which came up before, planning and zoning before the, the city council. And there was an existing IUP and somebody was asking for a new IUP and the residents were saying if that existing IUP was in violation and the city never did anything about it. What's our confidence level that we're gonna do anything if this new IUP has violations? And so part of that is, how do we monitor who has them? And if there is a complaint, we want to give Lori the tools and say, no, there's no permit on that property for that activity. Or yes, there is. And they are abiding by all the conditions that the council set. That should be information that should be readily available online to our staff. And so this is really just a, a way of, of looking at, we've issued permits, let's be responsible for those. And uh, you know, do it in a typical now then way. If you're not doing anything wrong. You know, we're, we're gonna leave it alone. If it shouldn't exist, we're gonna clean it up and say it doesn't exist anymore. That's really where we're going.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't disagree with the task. I just know that from a change management and communication plan, we better have a good one or people are gonna be pretty whipped up that they're gonna believe the city is cracking down on them.
Yeah, and, and what, what you'll find out, and that's, it's one of the things we came up, the reason that snow removal has taken so long is um, you need an education plan. Before people feel like they're being uh, reprimanded when, in the case of snow removal, actually cited uh, with a fine. Um, we want to make sure there's education. So our process has always been a series of letters informing um, and then we're gonna publicize whatever means we have. Here's what we're doing and why. So we're, we're far from uh, going out and ruffling feathers. We're just trying to get the basics in place right now. We, we understand that people come out here now to, not to be harassed. They'll, they'll remind that Liz repeatedly. All right, we'll keep moving ahead on that one. We'll get to, again, let us know when you want us to look at your revised spreadsheet and we'll help you with what we know. And you guys can put together a package for next month for review.
Okay, sounds good.
And now we'll go down to the resolutions for council appointments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, I would like to make the following changes on the document that Lori presented to us. Um. I have one, two, three, four, five, six changes um, to the document. Um. The, the first one is on page two. Down towards the end. Um, that can be removed because we passed an earlier resolution for that.
What, what are you removing?
The official newspaper. That was under a resolution um, number.
In the consent agenda?
Twenty-two, twenty-one oh four, in the consent agenda.
Okay.
And, and um, and I don't know, going forward, we can leave that here and not have to do separate resolutions for it. Um, then the next one is on page one, the third one down to administrator. To remove that because we don't have a city administrator. And under number four. Is to correct the date.
What was that? Number four?
Number four on page three.
Oh, the date?
Yes. And on page three again. We would replace number five, park and rec, with planning commission information. And then we can delete seven, or number six and number seven, as the information in number seven is included in number five and in number two on page two.
All right.
Mary, you lost me.
Okay, where, what?
Are you talking about number five? Seven's the same as number five. What?
Well, because we're ta, we're moving. We're moving the information for the planning and zoning up to number five. We no longer need number seven. Because that information would be under number five. And then it's also in number two as of the meetings.
So basically, you're saying you're eliminating five and six, and so seven now becomes five.
Correct, yeah. And, and it, you don't have to have, yeah, that's true.
That's just
Mr. Mayor, is there ad hoc? These two are ad hoc?
Yes. So they'll, they'll, as the committees form together, they won't necessarily meet the same night every month. It'll depend on who's on the ad hoc committee and when they can meet.
Verbage, the last two sentences of number seven are covered in number two.
All right, so back with those amendments, let's go back to filling in the blanks.
Okay.
All right, so um, we'll start with historically, who's been there, then we can talk about it. So item number one, acting mayor. This is the person who signs checks or CDs, uh, would fill in for me if I'm not available to sign those things. Uh, currently, that's Mary Rainville. Um, do we want to continue with Mary? Mary, do you want to continue? And does the council want Mary to continue as acting mayor? It's convenient to have somebody who's available during the day. Um, if things do need to happen during the day. Who is starting to talk?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, I would be um, more than happy to continue in that position if indeed the council chooses.
The nice thing about that is Mary is available during the day and she's already a signer. Up there, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Green, councilmember Greenberg.
I am in favor of you Rainville being the actor mayor.
All right.
So am I.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
All right. Uh, clerk treasure, obviously, is Lori Strike, city administrator. We don't have. Building officials, Minspect LLC at this point. City planner, Planning Company LLC. Um, planning commission liaison, I would like to continue. I have, uh, I've just been part of the planning commission for longer we've been a city, and I would like to continue as the liaison.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would agree with continuing you.
All right.
Joe Greenberg concurs.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, recycling liaison, currently Mary Rainville. Um, again, some of the recycling activities with the county take place during the day. Um. Anybody else? First of all, Mary, would you be interested in staying there?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would be pleased to uh, continue in that position. Um, if there is somebody else that is interested, please raise your hand, and I may be just seeing.
I concur, Mary's great.
All right. So all right, with Mary Rainville Recycling. County Fire Protection Council. Uh, this is a position where we meet uh, at least four times a year. And this is with all the fire officials across the county. And we vote on the, uh, Nooka County Fire Protection Budget. Um, among other things, we need a primary and then an alternate. I have been, again, uh, serving in that capacity since it was formed. I would like to continue that. I'm one of the senior members. As other cities turn over their staff. Uh, it gets pretty exciting every time, uh, we do a budget vote and people are at their very first meeting as an elected council member showing up at that meeting. So I would like to continue as the primary.
Mr. Mayor, I'll volunteer for the alternative.
All right. Council okay with that?
Yep.
And the, the alternate, you're, you're welcome to come to the meetings, but you may be able to vote unless I'm absent. Um, so I'll keep you in the loop on that. And if I'm not gonna be there, obviously, you become the voting member. And if I'm not going to be there, obviously you become the voting member. Noka County Highway Department Rep is currently Mary Rainville. Is there anybody, Mary, if you're interested or anybody else interested in that one?
What is the position?
The position is, is, well, I think in the time Mary's been doing it, she's had one meeting with. I have, I've been to some of their planning meetings along with Clerk Treasure and typically Planner Stockman. We get together and they look at their long range plans and anything that's going to affect now then. But basically it's a liaison that says if they're doing something, they generally go to Lori with it. But if we want to come to representation and that, we have somebody who can go to meetings in addition to the three of us that typically go. There hasn't been a lot of activity there because like I said, normally they're just alerting Lori of what's going on.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Most recently, we, um, there was a issue and it was not in strike. There was an issue with our calendars.
We're, we're missing you again, Mary.
I can't hear you, Mary.
You're breaking up.
Am I on now?
Yep. Seems like you're leaning to your left. It seems to be a problem.
To the right. The, I've had very little interaction with the county. Anytime I had an issue, I just always called them. It's been more just being a resident. Maybe they would have their planning meeting again. People could attend that. But there is very little interaction because most of it is going to Lori. I think the county has found that she is very receptive to information when they provide it to her and that she is. So if anybody would like that, you can just assure it will not tax you.
But again, if you're doing it, it's going to be during the day because the county doesn't work at night.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
That is correct. It is a daytime.
I can do that.
All right. Emergency Management Director, we take the acting out of there, Lori. It's now Emergency Management Director. And at this point, we've designated Chief Schmidt as our Emergency Management Director. And my understanding as an alternate, we have Joel Lawrence. Watershed Representatives, Joel, you would be willing to stay on there?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I would also like to recommend Dan Bryan to continue as a watershed representative with me.
Okay. And he has agreed that that is his choice as well?
He has.
Okay. Council okay with that?
Yes.
Good to have the experience here. All right. Next is Fire Board Representatives. This will only exist until if our fire department is functioning by April like we hope, that this will maybe be one more meeting. Currently, I'm the representative and Dan Bryan was the other representative. I was going to say it might be one meeting, getting up to speed on it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll volunteer for this.
Emergency contacts, we have Joe Glaze, Lori Strike. Officially by state statute, I am the weed inspector prosecuting Interpol Smith and Glazer, civil attorney Corinne Rupi, civil city engineer Hawkinson Anderson, animal control impound, North Metro Animal, official newspaper, Noka Union Herald, official depositories, Pine River State Bank and 4M Fund and we are the Economic Development Authority of city council members. We're also the Architectural Review Committee along with Minspect. And then we have the Planning Commission members and their, their years noted there. I miss anything?
So Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that we adopt resolution twenty-twenty-one with the changes we just discussed.
I second it.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Did you say me?
I did.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Alder?
Approved.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mr. Pealan?
All right. We got electronic, electronic sign removal. My understanding, Lori, the two bits we've got, Weiss Electric, disconnect the power, take care of the breaker inside, locate wiring, and determining whether to cap off or not. And they would do that for no charge if we gave them the sign panels. Is that correct?
Mayor and council, yes, that's correct. And I did check with Attorney Rupi and he said there's no issues with the trade in the work.
Okay. And then secondarily, getting the, the post down, that would be A and B Welding would drop it and we would take care of it once they dropped it.
Correct.
Staff would, and that would be $500.
That's correct.
So for a total of $500, if the council is amenable to giving away the sign panels, for $500, we could get that dead thing out of there. So I would make a motion accordingly to approve Weiss Electric to do the electrical work and retain the sign panels so we get that at no charge and to engage A and B Welding to drop the post and frame for us and the city staff to deal with the post from that point on.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Alder?
Aye.
Mayor Pealan?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
All right. And we have one more item on the list. It's for the good of the council. You would have received the Elected Leaders Institute for the Advance Program. And this is February second through the thirteenth. Again, an online program. Strengthen your leadership skills.
I had a motion that you said you were going to go back to.
Oh, you're, okay. Motion back on the planning zoning. Okay?
I want to make a motion that we rescind the ordinance we made in December to change the current makeup of the Planning and Zoning Committee until we have the opportunity to hear the thoughts of the current members of the committee. This isn't part of the motion, but we have four people on the committee and we've heard from three of them that are pretty upset about the way it was handled. And I just think it's not a way to start out our year with the planning and zoning being, feeling stress and tension between us and them. And I just think if we'd maybe contacted, talked to them a little bit and explained what we were thinking and why we want to do it this way, maybe the reactions would be better.
Okay.
So Linda, if I'm hearing this right.
We have a motion. We have a motion. No discussion until we have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Now we can have discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Okay. So when I look at the Request for Council Action, I, I agree with most of it. The one that I struggled with back in December was the council being the ones who appoint the chair and the vice chair. Jason, have you guys always appointed Dale Ames as the chair? Did you do that as the planning and zoning?
Excuse me. Yeah. Mr. Greenberg, Councilman Greenberg, I'm trying to get better at this.
Yes, we appointed Dale. We voted on it and appointed Dale.
And who is your vice chair?
Uh, there's not a vice chair.
It was Barry. Barry was the vice chair.
Okay. So every year, Jason, you voted in Dale Ames.
Yep.
Okay. So.
Just, just, just for clarification though, Councilmember Greenberg, we were going off state statute here. So we're going with like, we've gotten information from the league and from the states. The fact that we didn't do it right in the past doesn't mean we need to continue doing it that way. And that's where we realized in, in clarifying this and looking at, because it really came up with how many people need to be on it. And technically, like the EDA, the council could be the planning commission. And you just instead of having two meetings, you have one meeting. But we've always had a, a planning commission. And so we're looking at making it more efficient. But in, in doing the research, that's where it came up, that that's the council's responsibility because the council's looking to reflect what they were elected to do. You're trying to make sure that the people who are making the recommendations to the council are abiding by the comp plan, are abiding by the ordinances, the zoning regulations. And, and so it is the responsibility of the council to make those appointments. We just didn't realize that before. There's a lot of things from our township these that, and that was quite earlier this summer. The things we were doing wrong is the township that we didn't know. We've never incorporated into city policies or city ordinances to do it effectively or to do it the way we would as a city. So there were a number of things that were, were done, whether it be a good overall network or done in a certain way. But we were trying to clean it up according to statute and, and guidance from the league.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
If, if we've done, arguing with what your, your thoughts are, but I think the way we handled it was poor. I think rushing through that ours, that RCA so quickly, we hardly got a chance to really think about it, much less talk about it in December, the end of the year, trying to get this all cleaned up, everything so fast. I just, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think that's good business in the first place. In the second place, I just think we've, we've alienated people that we don't want to alienate. And maybe your, your thoughts on this are correct, but we could have communicated this in a much better way so that the people felt like they were part of it instead of, well, we're the council, we'll tell you what to do. We just, I don't think we handled it well. And I think we need to start over.
And understanding that, if we're going back to clean up what we weren't doing right, I guess that could have been explained better. The, the problem we had is we, we threw out a bunch of things at the end of that meeting that we're doing tonight and it's after 10 o'clock again tonight. Part of the reason we got rushed is we were packing a lot of stuff into a meeting and we said we're going to try and close down by night. We didn't have enough time to discuss it. Certainly understanding that we're trying to clean up what should have been done the right way to begin with would make that easier. You know, what Chairman Ames was talking about earlier tonight was not so much trying to do it the legal way as far as the council being responsible to make those appointments, but to, to reduce the, the number of, of members. Certainly nobody is losing their position that's on the commission right now. So as far as being upsetting that, I, I could see it being upsetting for saying there's currently seven members and two of you don't get to be on it anymore. We're going to decide who that is now. But the council is also responsible to say who is, who is ultimately selected to that commission. So nobody's actually losing a position, we're actually adding to it. Part of the, the logic of you all, other than it was late at night and we're trying to finish up a meeting, was one is we're just cleaning up according to legality that we hadn't been doing right. And two is we're not losing, we're not losing any members. We're still adding a member to it, we're just not adding two. Frankly, we haven't had, you know, more than six members in a year. And in many nights, we've only had the five for many parts of the meeting. But we have had five until the last couple of meetings we've had on five. So I, I guess that was part of maybe the insensitivity to it, that it, that it felt rushed, but it was really more of a cleanup than trying to rush the major change. And I, again, I think part of what we passed earlier tonight, the educational part is going to be important. We're going to presume that the people that are on it still want to participate after being educated and trained. So I, you know, I apologize for it appearing rushed at the time, but pretty much everything we did at the end of that meeting was feeling pretty rushed so we could close down.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
There's somebody that's not muted and there's a lot of background noise and a lot of like end clicking. We could prevent that because I'm having a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alder.
So I, I think Linda's right. I mean, you talked earlier about avoiding surprises and no one on the P and Z was aware that the city council is going to push through a change in the middle of December with zero prep. Dale didn't know. Kelly had to send an email to Lori. I wasn't aware of it. I came to the December meeting and said we should hold off. It got voted through anyway. I've talked to another planning and zoning member on it. So I agree that we should unwind this thing. And I don't necessarily disagree that the city council can have the final authority on the, on the, who's the chairperson. But I don't understand why we couldn't have the same scenario as when we're bringing in new planning and zoning members where the planning and zoning makes a recommendation to the city council. Because that city, the planning and zoning, again, from a transparency standpoint, there's very little transparency on what happened last month from the city council to the planning and zoning. And from a transparency to the citizens of now then, you're taking with that move, you're taking the ability for people to get involved from seven down to five. And that planning and zoning is a very good opportunity for people to get involved in the community and become someone that we can rely to on the bench when there's a city council opening or something in another couple of years. I mean, people are going to get their feet wet in planning and zoning and we want to give people opportunities. And when I ran for city council, it was based on transparency and giving people opportunities to be a part of now then and shrinking that down to, to what we're proposing is totally against that.
Well, you know, I think brought up at that last meeting that, that within the structure that, that we were told about, there is an opportunity for alternates as well. I, I think that having five members that come prepared, five members that know the ordinance, know the comp plan, have done the research can be effective. I don't know that, while, while certainly it, it can be a grooming for more involvement in the city, the function of the planning and zoning is planning and zoning, not grooming for, for the city. And, and we want to make sure that we're doing things in a legal and repeatable way. Again, land use issues are a big deal. Having more doesn't necessarily mean, mean better. And if they, if they aren't showing up, it certainly doesn't contribute to the, the primary purpose of the advisory recommending body. I think you want to have people that show up. I think you have people that are, are trained. And, and certainly we've been functioning with five people most of the time.
So Mr. Mayor, we haven't given them the opportunity to see if they can get involved because we never posted the spot. So.
But again, we have two, two candidates right now without posting the spot. I mean, it wasn't like, people, people didn't know, but that being said, even with the six that were there, we typically have all of them decide to show up. And for a variety of reasons. But, uh, it is, it is, you know, I, I think the tone of, of the, the, the email that went out, you, you don't want to, uh, be forcing things on people, but the city council, uh, until tonight, when you were sworn in, was the city council in, in the same respect that, that in any other elected uh, body in this country, until the new people are sworn in, those people have the authority to, to make decisions. Now, it, it may have seemed, uh, rushed through because of the way the meeting was ending up there. But I think Mary obviously prepared her RCA ahead of time. It went out to the council ahead of time. And it was an opportunity to ask questions. Councilmember Blake.
It, it went out a day ahead, but I, I agree. Nobody's really disagreeing with what you're saying, that maybe these changes are good ones and we should try. But we are in a small community. We are, uh, we're so to speak servants of the community. We're not the all, be all and end all. We're supposed to be listening to them and what they're thinking. And I think there was a gross amount of insensitivity. We can't just, uh, go back to this is the way it's supposed to be. These are the rules, these are the way, this is legal, so it's all okay. If we've hurt or stepped on toes and people are feeling that they have been marginalized, I think as the council, we need to look at that. And I feel bad about that. I don't feel that's the kind of council I want. I want us to be humanitarians and I want us to be caring. And not only making sure we do everything legally right and make sure we, uh, that's important and I'm grateful for that. But we've got other sides to us as people and the community needs to know we care.
So, so just let me clarify then. Um, you're saying we, you know, if, if it's the legal aspect of it, we could revisit it, but that shouldn't change if that's the legal aspect? Or you're saying if it's, if it's the legal part of it?
There's a good possibility that we might come up with this same ordinance. I'm not saying it's a terrible ordinance and I can see the point to it. I think the way we passed it and we did, everything was incorrect and I was hurtful. And I think that we need to go back, we need to rescind it, we need to come back, we need to talk to the people that are on the planning and zoning. Not that that's our responsibility, but out of respect. These are people that have served our community, a couple of them for many, many years. And I just want them to know that we respect them and what they've done enough to that tell them, this is what we're thinking of doing and this is why we're thinking of doing it.
Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
It, it was my motion. Um, it, it was brought forward. It's something that we, even previous councils to Linda and Joel had had conversations on. Um, I chose to bring it forward. Um, I have a lot of things on my desk here that I'd like to move forward. Um, they don't always occur. Um, I apologize if I, um, uh, upset the members. Um, I've not had one of them, um, call me. I've talked to a few. Um, I've not had one call me, um, to voice their opinion. Um, or their, their just, uh, just. And I, I just, I think what we passed was good. And it doesn't make sense to me to undo to, as Linda, Councilmember Blake says, maybe pass the same thing again. Um, the members have been hurt. I apologize if they voiced their opinion, so we know how they feel. But as a council, we made a decision and I think it's right that we stay with that decision.
Well. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
Yeah, I, I don't agree with that. I think Linda's correct. I think it should be undone and we should look at it. It's like, we have not even given the community an opportunity to see. We had two people apply for the job and we haven't even posted it yet. So earlier we agreed that, hey, we should make sure we have good requirements out there so people know what they are getting into. We should have a training plan for them so they can be properly trained when they get into it. I totally agree with that. Why would we not give four people an opportunity to be part of the community versus two? And you have seven people that potentially will either stay on the planning and zoning commission, may develop into the ad hoc communities that we think that we want for some of the other stuff. Or it can be a springboard for city council because I'm pretty sure not everyone's going to be in these positions forever. And it would be a great opportunity if someone's interested in the planning and zoning to get to that next level without having to jump right to city council. Because they're going to be aware of the ordinances, they're going to be aware of a IUP or a CUP. So it feels to me like, why would we not give people an opportunity? There's no reason why you can't have seven. And there's no reason why we can't let the planning and zoning make a recommendation to the city council on who the city council, or who the planning and zoning members are. And there's no reason why we can't say, planning and zoning, you guys recommend a, um, a chairperson and we'll be the final say because the, the council is basically the final approval on anything anyway. But you're trying to take away that responsibility from that team and it frustrated them. And they may have not talked to Mary, but I talked to, of the remaining ones, I talked to three of the four of them.
And, and, and certainly, um, you know, I can understand the commission wanting to get like-minded people in there. I, I have seen on Facebook, we're going to stack the P and Z so we can stack the council. And that, that would be the wrong reason to do it. Um.
That's not the reason, Jeff. That's not the reason.
No, I'm saying that would be the wrong reason, even though some people have stated that, that would be the wrong reason. Um, but yeah.
Whatever said there, for heaven's sake. I mean, that's, we're, we're certainly not going to stoop to that. I mean, we have to let that stuff go. There's a lot of stuff said there that we, I'm not going to listen to. There've been things said about me that I don't like to hear, but it's not going to change how I feel about these things.
But back to the point where, where the, the statute says the council does this, what, what would be the point of saying, and this is what I think where the frustrations come in the past, is, well, we all voted for this person and the council didn't accept it. If the council is the, the, the body that determines it, why screen that? Put somebody up there to say, well, yes, again, it's going to be the frustration to the commission because we all put this person, or majority put this person forward for, to join us or to be the, the chair. And for whatever reason, the council didn't go with it. So then the council becomes a rubber stamp in order to not, to not upset the commissioners again. And it's responsibility of the council to make those decisions because the council is elected by the residents. And the, the planning and zoning is an advisory commission to the council to uphold the comp plan that we've established, the ordinance that we've agreed, the ordinances we've agreed on, and the, the, the community environment that we are elected to represent. And so to say, go ahead and put somebody forward, but then we're not going to go with it, just again, puts us at odds with our own, odds with our own commission, saying you didn't, you didn't do what we wanted anyway. Even though that's what the statute says, we'd like it to be nicer from our point of view, regardless of what the statute says. And, and, you know, again, uh, Councilmember Blake, I, I know that sometimes the legal part of it gets to be the, the less merciful part of it. But we do have to abide by the, the ordinances, the statutes. And, you know, we are statutory saints. We are obligated to abide by statutory requirements.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not saying at all, we don't abide by those things and you know I'm not.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
I'm saying we're insensitive. But first of all, why don't we just vote on this? Because if we vote and the, and it comes out, this is mute. If we vote and we're not going to rescind this, the whole thing's mute, it just stands the way it is. And if we are going to rescind it, we can discuss it later. But if the vote comes out, we're not going to, then this whole thing is mute. We don't need to keep discussing it, I guess. Because it's already been.
Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Uh, I just, my, my biggest thing with it, um, Alders touched on was simply the voting, giving them the ability to choose their own, uh, chair. Um, that was the biggest thing for me. Um, if we kept everything else in this document except change that one aspect, we still have the, the authority as the council to approve whoever they suggest or disapprove whoever they suggest. Yes, a little awkward as you described, but still, I think, uh, they know themselves best. Uh, they work with each other and they can deduce for themselves who they think would be best to lead them. And I think they've done a great job by choosing Dale Ames over the past 30, 40 years. And I'd like to see Dale still in there. Um, so that's my biggest thing is just giving them the ability to vote their own chair.
So Joel, can I just, just two concerns I have with it. One is if you're adding new members, they wouldn't necessarily know who all those people are or how they work um, as, as a chair. And, and then secondarily, as you say, if they propose a chair and the council doesn't rubber stamp that chair, then we're at this odd point again. The council loses its statutory responsibility to designate the positions. And, um, we've, we've abdicated that to the commission. And if the council disagrees, now you're at odds with what the commission just recommended again. I think it would be prudent for the council to take a look because I think the council's going to be the ones um, interviewing and putting these people on the commission to say, this is a good candidate for a chair, that the commissioners would say, you're right. I don't think that the council's going to impose a chair on the commission that would be ineffective. So I, I think that by retaining the responsibility, authority that's designated to us and making sure we make the right choice rather than say, yeah, for whatever reason, the choice you put forward isn't what we would do. You, you avoid that by saying, let's pick the right person as a council to have, have effectively chair that committee. Um, I also appreciate, I, I've worked with Dale for many of those years, certainly not the 40 that he's been on there, but um, have appreciated his leadership. Um, but I think that if the council makes that um, decision upfront, you avoid the not choosing the person we sent forward or abdicating your responsibility to make that selection. I think it's incumbent on the council to pick the right person, right people to get on the commission to begin with and the right person to chair.
Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, I, that, nothing in this precludes the commission, the commission for making a recommendation. But with the understanding, as with any of the other recommendations that they make, it's just a recommendation and council still has final, uh, uh, approval as to who would, would be chair and co-chair. But the committee could and can, and I'm assuming will present.
They can make their opinions known, you're saying?
Yes, yeah. But it's still council's decision, um, based on statute.
Yeah, and making opinions known as opposed to, um, passing a recommendation, I think that's the bigger difference. They certainly can make their opinions known to the council. Um, but you, you get into, uh, an odd situation if there's a recommendation, this is our choice and the council doesn't go with it. I, I agree that there's nothing there that precludes that, those opinions from being expressed.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we trust that we don't think that the planning and zoning can make a decision on bringing on an employee or a candidate?
Because it's not their statutory authority. This came up during, during the, the elections here. People are saying, we need to get more autonomy to our committees and commissions. It's not legal. So that's part of the training is, is within the legality, this is not an autonomous commission or board.
It's the same as it's been though. We would recommend, the planning and zoning would recommend a candidate to the council for approval. And the, and the planning and zoning would recommend a chair to the council. And again, we have seven people.
Actually, I don't think we've, the, the, the commission hasn't recommended a chair in quite some time. The council's been, they can go back to our records.
That's a, that's a great reason to rehash this thing per Linda's request.
Why don't we vote on it? Everybody's getting tired and maybe this whole thing's just going to end tonight anyway.
All right. So we have a roll call vote. And the motion was to rescind and start over. And, uh, I, I will say that, uh, we'll call the vote.
Was there a second to Linda's motion?
Jason seconded. I believe, didn't you, Jason?
Yes.
Can we clarify what the motion is? Because I, I'm not going to vote in favor of rescinding our statutory responsibilities as far as appointing chair and co-chair. I don't have to. Okay, but that's, I just want to clarify what the motion is.
So, so what, what was the answer? I'm sorry?
The motion is, I want to make a motion that we rescind the original, um, ordinance made in December, changing the current makeup of the planning and zoning committee.
And then, and yeah, I would, I would agree, I can't rescind statutory responsibility.
But let's vote.
Yeah.
So, so, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Then in Councilmember Blake's motion, she's saying rescind the original RCA. That original RCA also discussed the appointment of the co-chair and co-chair. So she needs to reword her motion specifically to just state the seven down to five.
Is that what you're saying, Councilmember Blake?
What?
Are, are you saying the question of the number of, of candidate, number of members from seven to five is what you're looking to rescind? Or the, the whole statutory part of it as well?
I want to rescind the whole thing until we talk it through.
Okay.
With that being said, Councilmember Alders, are you still, uh, second?
Correct, yep.
And then roll call vote. Um, Councilmember Rainville.
Nay.
Councilmember Alders.
Approved.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye. Aye.
Clear, clear peel on.
Nay. Motion carries. All right, for the good of the group, the Elected Leaders Institute. I'd be good one, communication, trust, emotional intelligence and courage. So I would like to attend. It's an online course. Anybody else would like to attend?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would also like to attend the advanced program offered by the league.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, what is the program?
Programs for, uh, advanced course for elected officials that with years of experience. This is the program, Strength and Leadership Skills. Over a two-week period. It's exploring communications issues, trust issues, emotional intelligence and courage from a elected leader's position.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to take the junior one first. Yep.
I was going to recommend that.
I, I will think about this and let Lori know tomorrow, is that okay?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenberg, did you want to sign up for either class?
Okay, I went to two years of it. Do I go to the beginners again or do I go to the advanced now? If I went.
You would be advanced.
Yeah. Right.
No, you would.
And some people take the, the preliminary one again if they feel they want a refresher on, on those types of things, but it's a much longer course. It's a six-week course. Or it's, it's hours spread over six weeks. I think it's nine hours spread over six weeks.
Okay, well, I'll look at it again, I saw it was in here.
Yeah. All right. We have nothing else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move to adjourn.
I will second that and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good job on your first meeting, Jay.